The regular Bellevue City Council meeting for November 16th, 2020. Can we do the roll call, please, City Clerk?
Sure, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So unfortunately, we lost a pillar in our community. Last week, we, Dr. Jerry Weber, former president of Bellevue College, passed away. And, you know, he was remarkable at creating a relationship with the city of Bellevue. And we worked collaboratively with Bellevue College and with him on LGBTQ issues. I got to welcome the Republic of Congo students to, in an exchange program. Art, technology, affordable housing, so many valuable things that we were able to work with Bellevue College while he was president. And so I have asked the deputy mayor to please read a commendation.
Certainly, Mayor. The commendation reads as follows: Whereas Jerry Weber, president of Bellevue College for three years from August 2017 to March of this year, passed away at the age of 70 on November 11th. Whereas Bellevue College is a key city destination, the third largest institution of higher education, and the largest community college in the state, with over 30,000 students enrolled annually. Whereas Dr. Weber brought valuable experience to Bellevue College, having led two Illinois schools, the College of Lake County and Kankakee Community College, before coming here. Whereas at Bellevue College, Dr. Weber embraced the school's dedication to equity, sustainability, and diversity, supported faculty and staff, and helped students reach their academic and life goals. Whereas sustainability was an abiding passion for Dr. Weber, and after he left Bellevue College, he co-founded the Seed Center, an online resource for community colleges attempting to build and improve their green economy education and workforce training programs. Now therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Representative Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of its city council, do hereby commend Dr. Jerry Weber for providing strong leadership at an important time to Bellevue College, one of the city's essential institutions. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're so lucky to have known him and to have worked with him, and we'll miss him very much. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. City Clerk, do we have oral communications tonight? We can't hear you yet.
Yep, sorry about that. Thank you. Tonight, there are six speakers signed up for oral communications. So I will call the first speaker, who is Charles Watts. Mr. Watts, can you hear me?
Are you ready for me now? My name's...
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Members of the council, my name's Charles Watts. I live at 504 175th Place Northeast Bellevue, 98008. My family and I have been resident in Bellevue since 1968, or over 52 years. I practiced law with an office in the city for over 37 years. Our children are Bellevue Public School graduates. I speak tonight briefly, as I've written a lengthier statement, which the clerk assures me is a part of your meeting packet for tonight. I will not repeat what I've written there. I speak tonight because I think it is important to give great credit where it is due to the work of the staff and the anticipated support of that work by the council tonight on environmental stewardship plan. I've written and spoken to the council over the years about the urgency of fulsome action to meet the existential threat of global warming. It is less than 10 years before the world will have crossed into the likely horrible future of a world out of our control and in control of the forces that will render the entire planet we cherish unrecognizable and uninhabitable. Our children and grandchildren deserve our very best leadership and action to change the outcome now, not someday or later, or when convenient. Now is the time for action, and the ESP is a huge step in that direction if it is met. With the recent clarifications and the addition of the Meaningful Advisory Committee, ESP will put Bellevue in a bold leadership role, which your surveys show your residents want wholeheartedly. It will encourage and guide other communities as well. My main reading, my main remaining concern is the necessity of frequent monitoring and review of the progress of the city toward meeting its goals by crucial deadlines. Slipage of these deadlines, which are generous in terms of the crisis facing us, would be unthinkable. The plan is one of action, not repose. One of the important functions of the advisory committee should be to receive full and timely reports on progress from staff, so that the committee can respond with action if slippage occurs. That action, of course, would include the city council. To conclude, I offer my praise and congratulations for the work of the staff on ESP and the guidance and support the council in bringing it to this level of completion. There is, however, no slack time to complete the accomplishment of the ESP goals. Wasted or lost time is time that can never be recovered. The arrow of time reminds us of that crucial fact. ESP sets laudable goals. When approved, it is time to meet them. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. The next speaker this evening is Bruce Bowman. Mr. Bowman, can you hear me? Mr. Bowman, can you hear me? I'm giving...
Sorry, I'm sorry, I had you muted.
No, no worries. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the need for a leading-edge environmental stewardship plan. My name is Bruce Bowman, and I have lived in the Lakewood neighborhood of Bellevue for the past eight years. I have an engineering degree in environmental science. And when I retired from Boeing after a long career of managing large-scale systems, I wanted to find a way to give back to the community, utilizing my experience and passion for the natural environment. After contacting Jennifer Robinson, she directed me to contact Jennifer Ewing. Ms. Ewing counseled me that the Bellevue People for Climate Action would be a good fit. I joined the PCA group over a year ago and began my education on the challenges facing Bellevue regarding the climate crisis. I also joined the Climate Action Planning Committee, the citizens group representing various cities in King County. The CAP group is comprised of people that care about our environment and includes a developer, a college professor, engineers, a former city council member, a former city planner, a green building and construction management consultant, software engineer, schoolteacher, and a technical writer. The goal was to document a common set of actionable, in concrete steps, the cities can take. That was accomplished and is available. We all hear the threat of devastating effects climate change is having in our natural world. The collapse of fisheries, the devastating wildfires across the West, among other documented impacts. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is reporting we have 10 years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50%, or natural systems will overtake humanity's ability to address the threat. We all know COVID currently is having a huge impact on our daily lives. But not taking action on climate change now will result in orders of magnitude more devastation to us, our children, and the natural environment. When I joined the Bellevue PCA and CAP group, I, like you, believe that climate change is a threat. And over the course of the last year, I went from believing in the risk to understanding the many facets of the risk, to helping document actionable steps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That learning curve is very steep. This group met twice a week for months, researching and documenting real approaches in use today around the country and world in reducing emissions. I respectfully ask the Bellevue City Council to take leading-edge actions in the ESP deployment and leverage off those in the community that have studied actions Bellevue can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. The next speaker this evening is Court Olson. Mr. Olson, can you hear me?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello again, Mayor Robinson and council members. My name's Court Olson. I live in Lake Hills. I wish to offer conditional support of the just revised environmental stewardship plan tonight. For several years now, I've been heavily studying the climate crisis and potential solutions. And I've also observed the slow public learning phenomenon. While a large majority of the population today is concerned about the climate, most folks have just begun to understand how we might solve the crisis. Today, even very smart and highly respected people have very little understanding of the underlying greenhouse gas emissions problem or of the effective solutions. This is largely because the essential information is inconveniently located in many different places and also because it takes a fair amount of analysis to convert that information into an effective, comprehensive plan. It's certainly not because people are stupid. In part because of my career in the building industry, I've had an early jumpstart on studying solutions to the climate crisis. That's relevant because, as the city's website shows us, buildings are about half of Bellevue's greenhouse gas emissions problem. Today, I wish to thank the city for the recent environmental stewardship plan work. It is encouraging. That said, the city's work on the climate crisis is far from done. Continued analysis and improvements to this plan are going to be needed to reach the city's target of 50% greenhouse gas reduction by 2030. Therefore, today's plan should be considered a first step in an ongoing planning and implementation process. I'm happy to tell you that several of us in the People for Climate Action organization have the knowledge and background that could help the city reduce greenhouse gas emissions more robustly than we see written in the current plan. To that end, I highly recommend that the city establish an advisory task force focused on the 2030 target of a 50% greenhouse gas emissions reduction. Reaching that target will be a huge lift. If an advisory task force was made up of people that already have special knowledge and expertise on how this target can be reached, it would surely help the city to meet this immense challenge. Thank you for listening tonight. Please remember that the People for Climate Action Organization can help Bellevue reach its 2030 greenhouse gas reduction commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. The next speaker this evening is Betsy Hammer. Ms. Hammer, can you hear me? Ms. Hammer, can you hear me? Ms. Hammer, I see your hand raised. I've given you a prompt to unmute. Do you see that? Okay. Ms. Hammer, I'm going to circle back to you in one second. Let's move on to the next speaker, who is John Duggan. Mr. Duggan, can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here this evening. I believe last week was the meeting to give comments regarding bicycle pedestrian infrastructure. Unfortunately, I had knee surgery last Monday and was unable to make that, to call in at that time. I was a longtime Bellevue resident until about two years ago, when I moved down to Renton. I've been an attorney for 34 years, and over the past 15 years, my entire practice has been devoted to representing injured cyclists and bicycle advocacy. I am also a daily bicycle commuter, and I ride through Bellevue twice a day while commuting into Pioneer Square from my home in Renton, and then back again in the evening. Over the past 15 years or so, I've represented over 500 cyclists, and almost all of them were involved in bike versus car crashes. The point of my speaking to you this evening is to let you know that Bellevue needs more and better bicycle infrastructure. I want to thank you for your initial investments in projects like the East Rail and the 108th Bike Lane. While these are critical north-south backbones to get bicycle commuters to work and shoppers to retail centers, however, they're not complete and they're not yet connected. It is these unprotected gaps, like the East Rail to 108th, that cause bad bicycle versus car interactions. And when that happens, the cyclist usually loses. Most forward-looking cities and communities around the country and around the world are learning to embrace the bicycle as a tool and as an essential part of the multimodal transportation planning necessary to make vibrant and livable cities. While COVID has had a devastating impact around the world, it has also had a few silver linings. One such silver lining is that bicycle ridership has skyrocketed. Given COVID, people are hesitant to use public transportation, and they're seeking out other modes of transportation instead. When the air finally clears and offices reopen, companies like Amazon and Facebook and others will begin to move thousands of workers into the Spring District and into downtown Bellevue. When this happens, bicycle ridership is going to increase dramatically, and Bellevue needs to be ready. Bellevue needs to embrace the bicycle and make headlines for great bicycle infrastructure and not for bicycle car crashes and fatalities. I urge you to move forward to complete and connect existing bicycle infrastructure and to create new bicycle infrastructure. Creating better bicycle infrastructure will not only help decrease bicycle car crashes, but will help make Bellevue a better and more livable city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. I would like to circle back to Betsy Hammer. Ms. Hammer, can you hear me now? I see your hand raised again, and I'm not sure why you are unable to unmute. I have it unmuted on our end. Can you check for the prompt to unmute? It doesn't look like we are able to hear from Ms. Hammer. The final speaker this evening was David Hoffman, who was going to speak in support of the ESI plan. And we've already had three speakers in support of that for this evening. However, Mr. Hoffman has emailed the council with his comments. And Mayor, that would be the end unless we can get Ms. Hammer unmuted.
I just wonder if she might be struggling with the thing on my computer that I miss when I mute myself at the top with F4.
Sure. Ms. Hammer, if you are on a laptop and you have your hardwire mic muted, that could potentially be it.
Can she email her comments to us for tonight?
Yes, I will connect with Ms. Hammer after this meeting. I still see the hand raised.
So sorry about that. Okeydoke. Well, let's move on to the, are those all the, did you want to check on the phone to see if we had any other?
Yeah, we... Sure, we do still have some additional time. If there's anyone who would like to speak that's connected to the call, please use the raise hand function. I see you, Ms. Hammer. And also star nine if you're connected with a phone. And besides Ms. Hammer, I don't see any additional hands.
Okay, thank you, Charmaine. Mr. Miyaki, I think you have some good news for us tonight.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. I have two items I'd like to share with you this evening. The first one is, as the mayor mentioned, a good news story on the great work of our Transportation Department. We were recently informed that the city would be receiving an award for Best City Project from the Washington State Department of Transportation for our 120th Avenue Northeast Phase 3 project. Joining us this evening is Andrew Singalakis, our Transportation Department Director, to provide us some brief details about the project and the award. Andrew?
Well, thank you, City Manager Miyaki and Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House and the city council. And we do have some good news to share with you. The city of Bellevue will be receiving an excellent award from the Washington State Department of Transportation. There are only four such awards granted each year. And this one was in the category of the Best City Project, or projects that are constructed by cities. And in our case, it was the 120th Avenue Northeast Phase 3 project. Next slide, please. This is an annual award. The evaluation criteria include safety enhancement, practical solutions, multimodal integration, innovation, effective project management, community engagement. Sorry about that. Public satisfaction and time limits. Next slide, please. The 120th Quarter Improvements connecting I-405 via Northeast 4th Street to Spring Boulevard and runs along Sound Transit's East Link Rail Transit Extension. Next slide, please. The project supports growth and development for the new Spring District and overall bell red transformation. Next slide. Improvements included widening a two-lane road to five lanes with continuous five-foot wide bike lanes and eight-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the street. The project provided new water, sewer, and stormwater facilities for retaining walls and the undergrounding of electrical utilities and a bridge over the light rail alignment. The 120th Avenue Northeast Phase 3 project was completed on time and under budget with the help of city departments such as Transportation, Community Development, Utilities, Parks, and Development Services. And we also partnered with Sound Transit, WashDOT, and private developers in the area. Next slide, please. The project was key to opening development in the Spring District and TOD areas. It also provided access to the light rail stations and the Sound Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility East. The project facilitated hundreds of housing units, retail, and thousands of new jobs. Next slide, please. Here are some before and after pictures looking north. Next slide. And here are some before and after pictures looking south. Next slide. The project was 23.7 million, which included both federal grants and sound transit funding. And as you can see, a majority of the project funding was from outside sources. The final expenditure is approximately 20 million, savings about 3.7 million. And we're grateful for all of our partners to make this, make this project happen. Next slide. So what's next? The formal award ceremony with WashDOT, FHWA, and the city staff is scheduled for December 1st from 3:30 PM to 4:30 PM. I don't have the details about the ceremony, but I will be certain to let you know about it when I find out. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Mayor, I have one other item, and that is with regard to the governor's recent news release on COVID restrictions. On Sunday afternoon, Governor Inslee announced new COVID health restrictions, which begin to take effect tonight and last for approximately four weeks until December 14. The emergency rollback of activities comes as our state faces a record spike in cases resulting in hospitalizations being up by roughly 70%. These restrictions include indoor gatherings with people outside the household will be prohibited unless they quarantine for roughly, for 14 days. Restaurants and bars can only operate outdoor dining and carryout or delivery. Retail and personal services are restricted to 25% capacity. And indoor services are closed at gyms, museums, zoos, and movie theaters. In response to the mayor, to the governor's news release this morning, the city of Bellevue posted this information in more detail. In addition, provided other helpful links on our website at Bellevewa.gov. Our Economic Development Group also sent reminders to businesses on the existing support available to them, to businesses in this time of COVID. And as we move forward, the city will continue to keep the public informed of the latest news and updates via the city's website and social media. And Mayor, that concludes my manager's report.
Thank you very much. And I know these are proposed guidelines for the next four weeks. I really hope that it only takes four weeks to get out of the situation that we're in. But I did hear good news that the state is really anticipating that in the spring we should be resuming all our normal activities by at least, by the spring. So looking forward to that. I know we all are. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great. So we have a public hearing tonight. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council members. The public hearing is on ordinance number 6530, which imposed an interim official control tolling time limitations for certain active temporary use permits and suspends the restrictions for application of certain successive temporary use permits. This all in response to the impact of COVID on the construction industry. By way back, on October 12th, the council adopted ordinance 6530 imposing the interim official control. And per state law, a public hearing must be held within 60 days of its adoption of the ordinance in order for the interim official control to remain in effect. Joining us this evening for a brief staff report are Liz Stad, our Land Use Director, and Trisna Tanna, our Consulting Attorney, both from our Development Services Department. But then I'll go ahead and turn it over to both Liz and Trisna.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us this evening with you. I'm going to share our presentation here shortly. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Great, thank you. As Mr. Miyaki noted, we are here to present a brief staff report on the interim official control related to temporary use permits. This is ordinance number 6530, prior to council holding the public hearing for this interim official control. The direction that we need from council is to hold that public hearing. Our agenda for this evening, we will be explaining briefly the process for the interim official control. Talk about the objectives and the expected outcomes of this ordinance, and then recall the components of the interim official control measures and the permit decision criteria related to that temporary use permits, and conclude with asking council to hold the public hearing. So the process for interim official control, council adopted this ordinance 6530 on October 12th. It imposed interim measures related to temporary use permits. The Growth Management Act, or the GMA, provides for the city to adopt interim zoning regulations without notice or public hearing, so that these measures can be put in place quickly. But the GMA does require that a public hearing is held within 60 days after such an adoption. The public hearing tonight is to satisfy this GMA requirement. We are, of course, in the middle of the COVID pandemic in May. Governor Inslee, in collaboration with the Washington State Department of We are, of course, in the middle of the COVID pandemic in May. Governor Inslee, in collaboration with the Washington State Department of Health, put in place a reopening plan called Safe Start Washington. This plan is, would modify and put in place certain measures based on county-by-county data. As noted earlier, there has been a rollback to additional restrictions starting at midnight tonight. And the practical outcome is that businesses and services must continue to or further limit their activities and follow distancing and other requirements. In Bellevue, we are seeing that these businesses and services utilize temporary use permits to expand their areas to add capacity while following distancing requirements. As I'm sure you all have seen, restaurants are using outdoor spaces and parking lots to accommodate outdoor dining, retail stores are placing merchandise and accommodating shopping in outdoor spaces. There have also been some entertainment companies set up to provide drive-in movies. We are also receiving inquiries from educational providers to bring in portable structures for classroom spaces and healthcare companies to provide drive-in or drive-through medical services. These providers are needing this interim official control so that they are assured they can operate in this manner, certainly before investing and mobilizing these temporary measures. So the interim official control has quickly mitigated the continuing impacts of COVID and the limitations that have been placed by Washington Street Opening Plan. It allows permit holders to rely on temporary use permits to increase their ability to operate businesses and provide services and has expanded the ability for educational providers at classroom space for medical providers to provide drive-through or drive-in services. And it has reduced the underutilization of properties and alleviate businesses and services from completely closing their doors. I'm going to turn it over now to Liz Stedt, our land use director, to go through the next several slides. Liz?
Yeah, Trisna. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us this evening. Just a few quick reminders about the ordinance that we've discussed previously. This does actually give us the ability to toll the time on the ordinance, so we do not have a time limitation on these temporary use permits as long as Safe Start Washington is in place. So permit holders will still have the full duration of their permits once the governor lifts the Safe Start Washington. So we would start counting on the first day after the completion of all the phases of Safe Start Washington and any permit holders would have another 90 days to go ahead and tie up any loose ends and as they move back into their regular business processes. Next slide, please. Next slide, Trisna.
Do you see that?
It did not move. Okay. There we go. So, sorry about the technical difficulties here. One of the other wonderful things about this ordinance that was passed is that we can also now not have a concern about a successive application. In the land use code, there is a requirement that there be a 30-day interim space between two temporary use permits. And this actually allows us to not impose that 30 days so that we did have some applicants that had come in and they had a permit that had expired, and so we needed a way to be able to get them right back in the door and back up to business. So the applicants can now apply for successive permits as needed. Next slide. The permit decision criteria that we looked at in this was when we have a temporary use permit, we look at protecting the public health, safety, welfare, avoiding injury to adjacent properties. Example of that is the fire review team looks closely at all the tents and the heating elements and how those are working together to make sure that people are safe. We also look at whether the proposed temporary use is compatible in intensity and appearance with the existing land uses in the immediate vicinity. We also look at parking. Do we have adequate parking for that temporary use? We do require that people specify the hours of operation, and so that is something that we can help make sure that there aren't too many impacts on adjacent neighbors by keeping the hours in a certain time limitation. And lastly, they are not allowed to cause adverse noise, light, or glare on surrounding uses. So all of those are things that we review when we do look at the temporary use permits. So the next steps for where we're at right now is to hold the required public hearing. We are continuing to communicate with existing permit holders and potential applicants. And we have implemented some streamlining for reapplication and revision process for those people that are slightly changing an existing permit that they already hold or that somehow fell out and need to come back into the system. We've got a streamlined process for them. So the direction we need from council tonight is to hold the public hearing on ordinance 6530. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is an ordinance that the council has already adopted. So as part of the procedure, we need to do this public hearing. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. City Clerk, do we have any public testimony?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is one speaker pre-registered this evening, and that is Patrick Bannon. Mr. Bannon, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Charmaine. Can you hear me?
Excellent. Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the council, City Manager Miyake. Thank you for the opportunity to sign on and weigh in support of this ordinance. I know it's after the ordinance is already passed, but I just wanted to take this opportunity, one, to reflect our appreciation. I should go back and introduce myself. My name is Patrick Bannon. I'm president of the Bellevue Downtown Association. And to reflect our appreciation for the leadership the city continues to show in supporting the small business community in doing whatever the jurisdiction can to come around those businesses and provide flexibility, responsiveness, solutions-oriented approach to doing everything they can to help those businesses. So we will continue to do everything we can to make that happen in partnership with the city. I want to just commend the city staff as well for their flexibility and solutions approach to the COVID crisis. It's been remarkable. We've learned so much working together as a team and trying to solve for business needs. I think we're all listening even more than we did before. So again, want to reflect my, my personal appreciation as well as that of the BDAs for the council's leadership and the city's overall leadership in confronting the epidemic and supporting small business. Again, support this ordinance. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. That was the end of our pre-registered list, but I would ask at this time if there is anyone connected to the meeting who would like to speak to the council, please use the raised hand function if you're connected with the computer or star nine if you're connected with a phone. And Mayor, I do not see any hands.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are done with that. Actually, we don't have to take a vote because we already did. So let's go ahead and move on to our study session items. Mr. Miyake?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have three items under the study session this evening. And the first one is the Planning Commission's final review recommendations. And the criteria that's set forth in the land use code to make recommendations on the 2020 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment work plan. Just by way of background, the city conducts its annual amendment process over the course of the year. The city council studies and directs recommendations, the Planning Commission for final review, which is happening tonight. And afterwards, the city council acts by ordinance to amend the comp plan with proposed amendments, which is now proposed for December 14th, your last meeting of the year. This was last in front of council on July 20th, where the city council initiated the C1 Affordable Housing Amendment into final review. Then again, on August 3rd, where the council directed the four privately initiated amendments into 2020 Annual Work Program with Threshold Review. And joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, Director of the Community Development Department, and joining him is Emile King, Planning Assistant Director, Tara Johnson, Comprehensive Planning Manager, all from the Community Development Department. And also joining us is Radhika Mulgavkar, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission, will be part of the presentation tonight. With this, I'll turn it over to the planning team for further introduction and presentation.
Thank you for the introductions, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we are presenting a series of recommendations to amend the city's comprehensive plan. This plan is very important to Bellevue as it sets forth a vision, goals and policies, and a series of land use maps that guide development and property zoning designations across the city. Careful consideration of these annual amendments is a hallmark of the planning we seek to undertake in Bellevue. The common theme of these amendments is housing. The four site-specific amendments each include consideration for additional housing capacity to varying degrees, each with unique circumstances that you'll hear more about tonight. In addition, the city initiated amendment for C1 policies pertaining to increased affordable housing is an important precursor to future technical work and community engagement that staff will undertake. At this point, I'll turn things over to Tara Johnson, the city's Comprehensive Planning Manager and staff liaison to the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, Newenhaus, City Manager Miyake, staff present this evening, and members of the public. Give me a second while I pull up tonight's presentation. And I am having some technical difficulties here.
Tara, this is Charmaine. I'll pop it up for you.
Thank you. It's not populating for some reason.
Tara, unfortunately, you have it open on the drive. Can you please close it and then I will open it? Thank you.
All right, it's closed. Thank you. So as part of our presentation this evening, we have with us, and staff has already introduced our Chair of the Planning Commission, Radhika Mulgavkar, who's going to be providing the council and the public with an overview of the Planning Commission's recommendation on all the comprehensive plan amendments that were considered as part of this year's work program. Also present this evening, we have Senior Planner Nicholas Matz and Janet Luine, both of whom oversaw their respective portions of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. And so should any questions arise from city council, we'll be directing questions. Should it, should it apply to their applications and they can provide additional analysis and information to the council? If you could go to the next slide, please, Charmaine. Thank you. So purpose of tonight's evening is, first of all, to provide an overview to the council of the Planning Commission's recommendations on all five comprehensive plan amendments. And then for a city council to provide direction to staff, we hope to come back to you on December 14th. As you know, comprehensive plan amendments are annual amendments that can occur just once a year per state law and per our city code. And so our intent is to come back to you on December 14th, address any issues or questions that you may have as part of tonight's study session, and then bring this back to you for final action in December. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So apologize in advance for the amount of text on this slide. But I did, we did want to highlight for you the final review decision criteria that both staff and the Planning Commission use when we're evaluating each of the comprehensive plan amendments. Each of the applications, we review them to ensure that they comply with each of these specific criteria. We do go through a very comprehensive process with public noticing. We also go through public hearings with the Planning Commission, as well as a courtesy public hearing with applications that fall under the purview of the East Bellevue Community Council, following Planning Commission's public hearing, and then issuing a formal recommendation on each of the applications. We bring this back to city council for your review and consideration, and then back for final action. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So just to highlight the four applications, as we've said previously, we received, we received four applications which we brought to city council in August. City council went through the threshold review criteria and initiated all these applications into the final review process. In addition, there was also a policy text amendment that was brought forward to city council by staff. And city council launched the Affordable Housing C1 Strategy in July. And so all these five comprise of the work program relating to the Comprehensive Plan Amendments for this year's work program. I also would like to highlight there are three applications that fall under the purview of the East Bellevue Community Council, which were the subject of our, I believe it was October 6th hearing, courtesy hearing with them. They were the Northeast Eighth Street Partners' application, the Glendale Country Club Northeast application, and then, of course, the Affordable Housing C1 Strategy. We'll be reviewing each of the Planning Commission's recommendations on all five applications shortly. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The, this is a map that graphically depicts the location of each of the four private amendments and their site-specific amendments. The C1 Strategy, of course, is a policy amendment, so it applies citywide based on specific criteria, which we'll be talking about as part of this presentation as well. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. And now I'm going to hand things over to our Planning Commission Chair, who's going to walk through the Planning Commission recommendations on the four privately initiated amendments, and then we'll start talking about the C1 Strategy following that.
All right. Thank you, Tara, and thank you to all of the staff in, who have been working with the Planning Commission. They've done a great job throughout the year, especially in light of everything with COVID. And thank you, council members, and for having me and hello, public. So I will begin with 100 Bellevue Way Southeast. The Planning Commission recommends by a six-zero vote that the city council adopt the 100 Bellevue Way Southeast Amendment to amend the map from a split downtown, mixed-use downtown MU and office to a single downtown MU on a .87 acre site. The commission found that the application satisfies all the land use code decision criteria for the final review of a comprehensive plan amendment. Notably, it is, its consistency with other similar amendments to fix split designations and its resolution of a significantly changed condition regarding the ability of such splits to realize the city's land use vision for both sides. Should I, Tara, should I have questions now or at the end? We'll do it at the end. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this is the Safeguard Self-Storage. Again, the Planning Commission recommends by a six-zero vote that the city council adopt the Safeguard Self-Storage Amendment to amend the map from an office to a community business on five parcels totaling 6.4 acres. The commission found that the application satisfies all the requirements for final review of a comprehensive plan amendment, notably that the proposal is consistent with implementation of the 2008 Crossroads SubArea Plan Amendments and supports the revitalization of the crossroads area. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission recommends, again by a six-zero vote, that the city council adopt the Northeast Eighth Street Partners Amendment to amend the map from Office Multi-Family High on two parcels on a nearly one-acre site. The commission found- The commission found that the application satisfies all land use code decision criteria for final review of a comprehensive plan amendment, notably that it seeks to maintain the vitality and character of a Bellevue neighborhood while appropriating appropriately addressing local business, the local business location. Next slide, please. This, this, the Glendale Country Club actually had the most amount of discussion aside from the affordable housing strategy within the planning commission. And in the end, the planning commission recommends by a four-two vote that the City Council adopt the Glendale Country Northeast Amendment to amend the map from a single-family low to multifamily medium on a 3.3 acre portion of the currently undivided Glendale Country Club property, so the little triangle. The commission found that the application satisfies all land use decision criteria for final review of a comprehensive plan amendment. And we, to give a little more detail, since this wasn't a six-zero vote, the commissioners decide, discussed the Glendale Country Club Northeast Amendment at length, as I noted, and the rationale for staff's recommendation to not adopt the proposed amendment. Most of the planning commission ultimately concluded that the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan in that it was not made in isolation to the surrounding area and thus could fit within the neighborhood, which is criterion B1. It addressed the interests and changes, changed needs of the entire city regarding the evolving community role of the golf course over the duration of its 60-year-plus history, criterion B2. It could be suitably developed under multifamily designation even with regard to the critical areas designation, criterion B4, and could achieve a public benefit that was not based solely on financial incentive, but in fact, did demonstrate a community-wide environmental benefit, which is criterion B5. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Tara to continue.
Thank you, Chairman Gavkar. Now, I just would like to highlight some of the pertinent, relevant highlights of Action C1 and the C1 Affordable Housing Strategy, which, as we said previously, council launched this effort on July 20th. This body of work is actually a multi-phase process. And so we're here this evening essentially to talk about the comprehensive plan policies and changes to the housing element within the comprehensive plan. However, following that, staff will be doing a great deal of work, technical analysis relating to land use code provisions that speak to specific density incentives for both single-family and multifamily properties. I'll talk shortly about the types of properties that this would, this would impact. But essentially, once the comprehensive plan amendment, one city council takes action on the comprehensive plan amendments and the specific policies that would reside in the housing element, following that, we'll start the Luca process, which will come before both the planning commission and city council, we anticipate the first quarter of next year. We currently have existing incentives, affordable housing incentives at, within our code, which have not been heavily utilized as we've talked about at our July meeting with City Council. Our intent is, we're taking a look at that similar section of the existing incentive and trying to figure out what the appropriate metric is. All that will, all that kind of density analysis and technical analysis will occur as part of the land use code amendment process. So that's not something that's occurred up to now. Our intent is to apply, to not have this apply within our growth corridors like Belred Downtown and East Gate. And the reasoning for that is primarily because those areas already have existing affordable housing incentives in place that have been used. And so our intent is to really focus in on the types of properties, religious faith-owned properties that qualify. And in addition, under House Bill 1377, which was passed earlier, which was passed last year, and is now enacted into state law, we would like to amend the code, obviously, to comply with the provisions under House Bill 1377. I would also like to highlight that, and we talked about this as well at the July 20th council meeting, that staff brought forward Section C1 as part of the Affordable Housing Strategy, part of one of the 21 actions. And staff did bring forward a proposed amendment or amendments to the code to fulfill some of the intent under the strategy in 2018. There was extensive council discussion at that time. And, and council direction was to defer this conversation because there was anticipation that this bill was being discussed through the legislative process. And so council direction was to wait till that occurred. And so that has occurred. It has been part of the Community Development Work Program. And so city staff came to council as part of our typical twice-a-year update on the Affordable Housing Strategy in March of this year and indicated that we would be coming back later on this year to start work on this Action C1. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. I did want to touch on the types of properties that would be impacted by both the comprehensive plan amendment policies, proposed policies, and recommended policies by the planning commission, as well as potentially the land use code provisions, which will be coming for you, before you next year. So types of properties that fall under this, these categories and that have been referenced as well under House Bill 1377 and state law include public surplus property, nonprofit housing, and faith-owned property, all located in multifamily and mixed-use zones. Under single-family zones, we're looking primarily at faith-owned property and religious, property owned by religious organizations. Does not include property that comes under the ownership of our parks and community services or properties owned by public utilities. And then, as we mentioned before, it of course excludes the growth corridor areas downtown Belred and East Gate, since they already have incentives in place. We would also like to clarify, I think this was a issue, a question that came up at our July 20th briefing or a discussion with City Council, when City Council provided direction to start work on this, on this effort. There was a question regarding whether properties that currently are not under these specific types of ownerships. Once, once code provisions are enacted, whether those would also be, could also take advantage of these incentives. And the answer is, our intent is, they would be able to. Of course, we don't know how many properties would take advantage of these incentives. Staff has done a fair amount of outreach and conversation with, with constituents, with affected property owners, folks that are, that own religious, religious property churches and other religious institutions. And the feedback that we've received is not all of them have the ability or available land based on the types of type, types of services that they, that they offer to take advantage of the density bonus. But we do know there are a few. And so staff anticipates that it's just a few of these types of properties that would develop. Also, something additional to note is several of the religious institutions and organizations that are currently existing have been in existence with the same zoning since the 60s and 70s. So this provides an opportunity, if they do have available land, for them to provide these additional services and affordable housing on their property, if it, if it suits their purposes. If you could go to the next slide, please. Included in your packet as part of your council material, staff included the draft policies that have been recommended by the planning commission. And what we're proposing and what planning commission has recommended to move forward for council's consideration are three policies. One, that policies that would provide direction in, in order to develop regulations, which would come about as part of the Luca process, that would provide bonus incentives, additional bonus incentives from the existing 15%. And those would apply in both multifamily and single-family zones within the city for affordable housing. And again, they would have only applied to those eligible, types of eligible qualifying properties that we just talked about. We're also in proposing, and planning commission has also recommended a policy in support of creating a demonstration program. Staff has been approached by a number of different groups, nonprofit, and different organizations that have expressed an interest in developing affordable housing. And so we're adding some policy language that could enable a creation of a demonstration program that would apply just in multifamily zones within the city. If you could go to the next slide, please. So following council action on C1, along with all, of course, all the other privately initiated amendments, next steps really specifically relating to C1 is for staff to start working on some of the provisions relating to the demonstration ordinance. And so that's something, again, that will, that would come back before City Council. And then in addition, we anticipate early in 2021 to start working on the land use code amendments that would add specific requirements and thresholds to density bonus incentives that would apply in both single-family and multifamily zones. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. And now I'm gonna pass things on to Chairman Gavkar again, who's gonna walk the council through and through some of the discussion that occurred as part of the planning commission deliberations.
Thanks, Tara. So the planning commission recommends by a six-zero vote that the City Council adopt the C1 Affordable Housing Strategy Amendment to amend the housing element in glossary with policy for an incentive-based approach for increasing affordable housing development potential, consistent with the Affordable Housing Strategy C1, to increase development potential on suitable land owned by public, nonprofit housing, and faith-based entities for affordable housing. This commission actually discussed the C1 Affordable Housing Strategy Amendment in quite a bit of detail with the unanimous recommendation in general support of the, of the proposed text amendment language to the housing element for its intentional and bold approach to the Affordable Housing Strategy implementation. However, I would say that all of the commissioners, I think, felt like though affordable housing is an extremely important issue, the amount of time that was given to us to review this was not sufficient and that we didn't have enough time to do an adequate analysis. Additionally, there were members of the public that felt like there hadn't been enough time for public comment, and they made that point during our commission meeting. So the outcome is, even though we voted on it, part of it was the pressure of knowing that it couldn't come back until next year. And I think commissioners felt a little bit like they hadn't gotten enough opportunity to really understand such a complicated, important subject for the city. But that's not to say they weren't in support of it. It's just to say that they felt like they needed a lot more time to really understand the full implication of all that. And because of that, the commission raised concerns regarding review time, adequacy of the data related to analysis of income levels and the impact of the amendment on neighborhoods and infrastructure, and was requested that we add the language to our recommendation as follows. The planning commission desires to see the City Council direct that current and appropriate data on income levels and specific site impacts to infrastructure, including transportation, the environment, school districts, and other services be provided to the commission during the study and review of the C1 Luca. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Tara.
Thank you, Chairman Gavkar. Charmaine, thank you. So I just would like to briefly touch on the community engagement component of the comprehensive plan amendment process. As you know, due to COVID, we really had to pivot to an online environment. But we are here now at the end of the, and nearly the end of the year and have been able to move forward with both threshold and final review in this online environment. So planning commission held public hearings relating to threshold review. We started that process in February. Unfortunately, planning commission couldn't meet for a little bit. So following that, they were able to hold a public hearing in July. And then City Council launched the C1 Strategy in July, and then also established the rest of the comprehensive plan amendment work program, which includes the private amendments in August. Then we, staff worked with the planning commission on the final review process through study sessions. We also, as we've indicated previously, held a courtesy public hearing with EBCC for three of the applications. And then following that, we had a planning commission public hearing on the final review process in October, late October. And then we're bringing forward the planning commission, we brought forward the planning commission recommendations as, as we've, as we've worked through each of the amendments and anticipating action by City Council by the end of the year. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. Just to highlight some of the community engagement that's occurred as part of each of the applications. The first three applications, 100 Bellevue Way Southeast, Safeguard and Northeast Eighth Street Partners, the majority of the applications, majority of public comments, sorry, came from applicants and letters of support for, for the applications. With the Glendale Country Club property, we had seven people speak at the hearing. We received a total of four comments and again, letters in support of the, of the proposed amendment. With regards to the Affordable Housing C1 Strategy, we had a total of seven people testify at the public hearing. Three had concerns about, similar to the planning commission discussion, three voiced concerns relating to the length of time and, and felt that additional review was needed prior to the proposed policies moving forward. In terms of the number of comments, we received substantive comments in writing over email electronically relating to the C1 Strategy. I believe the majority, about 100, were in support of the application. Some had specific comments relating to additional analysis that they thought should, staff should incorporate as part of this process and specific ideas on what that, on what the density should look like, density increases should look like. And then we had one application, one letter of comment, again, similar to the planning commission's discussion indicating that we needed additional thing, recommended additional time be taken to really analyze some of the impacts of the neighborhoods and traffic, traffic issues that could, that could occur as a result of these density increases. If you could go to the next slide. So that concludes our presentation for this evening. We're requesting direction from City Council to provide direction to us. And then in, in anticipation of us coming back to you on December 14th for final action.
Thank you, Tara, and thank you, Chairman Mulgavkar. Thank you for working so hard on pretty meaty material here. You and the commission did really good work, and we thank you so much. If you, is it possible for you to stick around in case the council has questions as we start our discussion? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to call on people in this order, and I'm going to ask you to keep your comments and questions to three minutes, knowing that we will go back around and we'll go back around as many times as necessary. But we'll start with Councilmember Barksdale, then Councilmembers Zahn, Robertson, Lee, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Stokes, and then me. So starting with Councilmember Barksdale as liaison to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also want to thank Chairman Gavkar and, and the rest of the commission for the robust and healthy discussion that they had. It was encouraging to see all the engagement and care that was going into consideration of these applications for preliminary and final review. And I also want to thank staff for their diligence in the analysis and supporting of the commission. And I just want to know, and I'll reserve any additional comments for later for the next round, but I just want to say I support the recommendations and also consideration of the amendment for additional data moving forward, as requested by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers Zahn.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers Zahn.
Yes, I too really want to express my appreciation to to the Planning Commission and the staff and and all of the comments that we got on these CPAs. I too support the recommendations to move forward with these. You know, and I what I really appreciate is the thoughtful review and really looking at right for the C one where it should not be because we already have some policies in downtown Bell Red and East Gate TOD. And the demonstration program, I think it's really important to be able to have a highlight or or one that we can look at to see how it works, making it incentive based. I appreciate the fact that we're going to look at income levels because I do think that when we talk about affordable housing, that piece is really important and then making sure that from a site impacts it works. I guess my one question would be how this might dovetail with the 1590 0.1 sales tax for affordable housing and whether as we are working that policy, it creates some potential funding to be able to work on the C one. And potentially these properties that may also be willing to develop for affordable housing. So that would be one of my my questions related to that. But otherwise excited that we are moving on this, even though I can appreciate that rushing is always a challenge. And so appreciate just the hard work of getting us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmembers Zahn. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you to the Planning Commission and staff. The the interesting thing about this set of comprehensive plan amendments is it's all about housing. And that's a really good news piece because we need more housing in Bellevue. We need more housing at all levels, but particularly that missing middle. And I think that all of these comp plan amendments will help with both affordable housing and with the missing middle. So before I weigh in, I'd just like to say I support all of the amendments. I will vote be voting yes when they come forward for action. And I also really appreciate and do support the Planning Commission's asks for additional data and details that they're going to grapple with on the land use code. For the C one. And so my comments now are about going to be about C one and how that's going to move through after council passes these comp plan amendments and the land use code work begins. First, I think that it's really important that that everyone, the public planning commission council understands exactly what HB 1377 is. We didn't get an explanation of that tonight. It's a session law from the 2019 session. But I think that it's really important that the policymakers understand what that law says and what that law does and how that's going to impact the changes that we need to make on our land use code. So it'd be great if part of the planning commission work for the land use code includes a very clear explanation to them and to the public about what that is. I'd also like to see that come forward to council so that we understand what it is. Second, I think that the planning commission's comments about suitable land is very well taken and wanting to see the impacts on with regard to schools, environment, transportation and neighborhood, as well as the income levels. One of the things that was a message that I heard loud and clear from the tag or from some members of the tag is that dispersion of affordable housing within projects and within the city is really important. We don't want to have a lot of projects that are all low, low, low income together because there can be a stigma to that. And also people may not feel as comfortable there. Having a variety of income levels from market rate to very low within a single project can be really helpful. So I hope that the Planning Commission will consider that input when they're looking at the land use code, not necessarily making it so that when affordable housing is developed, it's all low, low income together. I think allowing some market rate units to be mixed in, or at least workforce level units to be mixed in will make the projects a lot more feasible, but also make it so that the projects are a lot more successful for not just the builders, but the people that live there. To that end, I think it might be helpful to have the it for all the members of the tag that are still around and available to come and do a session with the Planning Commission on the land use code. Because I think that the Planning Commission would really benefit from hearing those experts opine, but also being able to ask questions. I was so grateful to the members of the technical advisory group who helped put together the affordable housing strategy for us. And I think that their expertise would still be a great benefit. So that's my weighing in on the land use code for C one. I'm going to vote when these come forward for action, I'm going to vote yes on all of them and thank the planning commission for their thoughtful comments. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Since we only take three minutes, I want to just highlight a couple of things and hopefully we have a second round. Number one, I want to thank the commission. They are wonderful to be so diligent to look at. And I like to know that the amendment that had two dissensions, what are some of the reasons and discussion for the asset for the dissension? Second, in for the C one is one I have some concern about. When we last heard it, you know, we all support affordable housing, no question about it. We need more land, we need more encouragement, we know need more housing. Whatever opportunity we have, we need to do it. And this is a great opportunity to utilize space like the churches that, you know, have space that they can be turned into affordable housing. That we see this model and it works very well, we encourage it. The only concern I had when I raised the question then is you know, we don't, I don't want to have to see any unintended consequences. Because the question has been raised by the commissioner is the neighborhood and also Councilmember Robertson and transportation. What's impact the neighborhoods? Currently, we the study we made, the analysis we made the church property, religious own properties, it doesn't have any negative impact. Yes, we all understood it. But if we provide a opportunity for people to go into a single family's own place and say, we I intend to establish a church here. And in fact, they do. But after, you know, very short period of time, they decided, well, we're turned out into an affordable housing. You know, that will be, I think, unintended consequence that would have an impact, you know, to the community. Whatever that may be, we don't know. I don't make any prejudgment as to what this should be, what it shouldn't be, but it's an impact. And I think that is a concern that I have. We need to make sure that whatever we do, it's specific. You know, right now, we know, we think that was specific. But what if an area, an example I just gave, people do go and say, well, because religious facility can be cited in the single family homes, so let's you know, somebody developer just can go in there. But after a very short period of time, that place can be turned into a affordable housing. You know, land use and that may have impact we have not anticipated. And how do we handle that? So I just want to have some certainty, some conditions. And I talked to the staff, I think the staff understand that, but I have not heard back from them. But I sense that they they figured out, well, it is a concern. I don't have heard a an answer that how do we prevent unintended consequence? So before I know what it is, I would be of my my action. But I support the concept in general, obviously, absolutely. But just specifics, I'd like to know. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, Moonhouse.
Thank you Mayor. And yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Lee's comment there, always looking at the details. So I appreciate that. But really appreciate staff with Thora Janet and Nicholas. Thank you so much. Great presentation. And thank you Char or sorry Chair Mo Gavkar for being here tonight. Absolutely support this, moving this forward and all the amendments as part of it. As as Councilmember Robertson said, we need more housing, period. And I think this is going to move us in that right direction. I'm also supportive of the commission's request for more time and more data. I hope the the time was more due to COVID and having to shift to online and we were in that odd period there for for a little a little while where we couldn't have meetings. And I know that affected the commission as well. So certainly hope that we can avoid that moving moving forward, but happy to move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
There we go. No, it's been a great conversation. Really appreciate the staff's presentation on this and the outlining the details and the hard work by the Planning Commission. And some of the comments, I'm glad to hear everybody is positive about this. It really is a big step in implementing what we started back two years ago now with the Affordable Housing Task Force. And one of the benefits of coming a little earlier or later, not benefits later is I appreciate very much Councilmember Robertson's suggestion on the tag. I was going to and have been working on that same thing. And I I I think the number of the tag group are interested in coming and talking with us and talking with the Planning Commission. So I would recommend we, it's not a formal reinstitution of that, but invite them to lend their knowledge and their scope and understanding of the whole process to this particular effort in looking at this. The and I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission did. And I think what we're looking at those, it was interesting, you had 101 comments. So there wasn't a dearth of people interested in looking at this and you know, very, very few real questions about the process. I think that one of the things we're we're looking at, this was a intended short look at it from a policy level to help the council move this forward. What a lot of the things they're talking about, I think is very important, but it's really in the implementation part, which is a lot of the work that commissions and boards do. So it's not all just and and to end up with a full blown, what are all the details, what are all the pieces, this and that? It goes into it would take a lot of time and sometime we get bogged down in in details at the wrong times. And I think this was was actually a very good move and I'm glad they voted for it six to zero, which shows strong support for it. And the concerns they brought up were legitimate and they'll be addressed at the right time. So I'm not, I'm not worried about that at all. I think we're in good shape on that part. I have concerns about the some of the conversation about bringing affordable housing into neighborhoods and single family neighborhoods. The fact of the matter is they're affordable, there are housing, multifamily housing all over of the city in neighborhoods. And you know, this is something that's changing and we're working on that and it is a concern, but I think we that that's not a real big issue. And I know that unintended consequences would happen, but if somebody has a formula for always avoiding those, I think you could make a million dollars. So it's good to raise the issue, but I I hope we don't get bogged down with some of the negativity of we don't want it in our neighborhood type thing. I think we can work with this. And it's a very good plan that would work well with the community and work well in really addressing all people who live and work and and in Bellevue. So I think it's a great advancement in what we're doing. And I think there are other advancements in the strategy that we need to work on in the future. And that's the way things go. You always improve. So I'm hardly in favor of this and look forward to moving this along and then actually coming back, working with the commission on the implementation pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead with my questions and comments and then we'll go back to you, Councilmember Barksdale. So I really appreciate this coming forward as quickly as it has. I know that church property situation was in front of the council about three years ago. And we were asked to vote on it that night with what we felt was not enough preparation or so to have the Planning Commission go through it as they are and bring it back tonight is very much appreciated. Three years has been a long time. And in addition to COVID, a lot of those church properties are just barely hanging in there. And you know, this is this is in lieu of seeing a lot of sales to private developers. This gives us a chance to get more affordable housing in, get a variety of affordable affordable housing for a variety of different populations. So I'm really appreciative of this opportunity. I have a couple of questions. The case study thing, I I feel like we've already seen examples of everything that a church property can offer. We've seen Andrews Glen, we've seen 30 Bellevue. I know there's an interesting duplex for seniors, I think on Sixth Street between 148th and 145th or something like that. Anyway, Amelia, you probably know what I'm talking about. But what what are we trying to accomplish with these case studies? If someone can answer.
Oh. So I think the intent is to really evaluate, first off, the feedback that initial feedback that we've received as a result of some of the outreach that's occurred. You know, what we've, some of the feedback that we've heard from religious institutions is that the density bonus may not be adequate enough for what some of the some of the projects that that are being considered, both by nonprofits. We've also had some conversations with organizations like Microsoft who are interested in doing affordable housing. And I think what they're trying to do is really in terms of density, they're trying to essentially what would result in is some significant up zones, which isn't the intent of the density incentive, density incentives that we're proposing. And in fact, we have the Dash property, which council is aware of. That is actually, they've actually come in and submitted for a comprehensive plan amendment as part of our 2021 cycle. So that will be coming forward to both the Planning Commission and council in due course. So essentially projects like that, which are wanting to really accommodate a really significant amount of not not extensively significant, but more than the density bonus would allow for.
So that's the Dash project is proposed for a church property?
No, no, the Dash prop.
I'm trying to figure out what a case study is. What's the value of doing that instead of just going forward with the church property rezones?
The demonstration program would not apply in single family zones. So the proposal is for multifamily zones. The proposed language within the policy that that we've we that we've included to the planning commission and then planning commission has recommended to council at this point.
So I guess I'm still not understanding the benefit of a case study since I feel like we've already done church property rezoning and development in multifamily zones or we've created multifamily zones. So how would a case study be different than what we've seen with Andrews Glen, what we've seen with 30 Bellevue and any other church property development that we've already done?
This would not necessarily apply to religious organizations. So it'd be, it could be a nonprofit, it could be another type of developer that comes in and wants to propose propose some sort of project that we haven't, we haven't really thought of. So it provides an opportunity for us to really see what if we have barriers within the code, why aren't we seeing more affordable housing being developed in Bellevue? What, you know, essentially what are our barriers? How can we overcome them? What are things, can we can we see a project that's innovative in some way that we haven't considered before? Whether it's a combination of some unique services that they're able to provide. There's several great examples of that that have been done around the area. So it's essentially the intent.
Okay, so it's not necessarily the church properties, but it is still the C one, which is surplus property. So I just don't want to put anything in here that slows the process down any further than it's already been slowed down. So can we move forward on church property rezoning without doing a case study first?
Yes, those are all parallel paths. So the demonstration ordinance would be one. We are also considering as part of our 2021 work program CPA policy amendments, looking at maybe there's a certain grouping of select properties that are located on arterial that that may that could be granted or we would move forward with proposing up zones or different zoning designation that could accommodate some additional affordable housing. And then you'd also have the density provisions, density incentive provisions within the code. So there'd be multiple avenues to achieving C one.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. So I, two more questions. One is what is the impact of the amendment that the Planning Commission is proposing?
Chairman Gavkar, do you want to cover that or?
Well, yeah, I mean, I for I don't think it's a really an impact. It's more that we just wanted to be clear of the areas that we thought we needed more information about. So we and we wanted to message that to council as well, that these are areas where the where the Planning Commission felt like they didn't have enough information to make. planning commission felt like they didn't have enough information to make, um, good decisions under a Luca. Like they felt good about overall policy, but wanted better detail. And there was a lot of concern that, uh, particularly around the income data, that it was old data and wasn't, you know, we needed to freshen that up and things like that. And so that was the intent.
Yeah, the, that's the intent and I understand the intent. I'm wondering what the impact is from the staff level.
Mayor Robinson, maybe I can jump in on that.
And Chairman Goffcar, sorry. I, we baited you for that and I appreciated your explanation. So thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Many of the comments that were made by the planning commission, uh, are really revolve around what will be Luca work. So how will this work? Where will it work? What are the impacts of, of the decisions and the metrics? And how do they apply in and around neighborhoods? And that's the exact nature of the work the planning commission will take up next year. The policies as drafted tonight, we believe, and I think the planning commissioner recommending to you, allow for flexibility to implement the affordable housing strategy appropriately within the bounds of what the strategy contemplated. But of course, the devil's always in the details. And so the planning commission would like a lot of data as they work through the Luca process to make sure it's consistent with the overall strategy and the policies as proposed here tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. And then the last thing is you kind of alluded to this, you know, um, looking outside of the C1 proposal here, um, the rezones, just all of these rezones don't necessarily bring us affordable housing. We have an opportunity for it, but it's not required in any of these rezones. And I of course would love to see it included, affordable housing included in all of these new developments. So how does it move parallel with our affordable housing plan? And is there something we'll be able to put in place that will kind of guarantee that we get some affordable housing from these decisions that we're making? Um, I think, sorry, Tara, I think Mac kind of alluded to this this morning. So Mac, maybe you can, um, tackle this one.
Sure, Mayor. I mean, there, there are a couple of paths that may end up in, uh, affordable housing at the projects. So, um, assuming that developers move forward after they receive, you know, if this, they receive the comp plan amendment and then a corresponding up zone, um, there is not a requirement, I think, as council knows, to have to provide affordable housing, you know, in projects. The city uses its incentive system to try to incent projects into that affordability. Now, one of the things that has come up is in the, um, uh, multifamily districts where we use a density per acre standard, uh, there is not an incentive based into that system currently. The incentives are general, there's a small density bonus, but it's not the same as in, say, the Bell Red, uh, where you get an FAR bonus that is fairly significant. One of the paths that I would offer for the council is, uh, you're looking at expanding the MFT program to be citywide, which would be a significant property tax incentive for a developer to want to look at putting an affordability component into their project in these types of multifamily zones. So we're looking at all of that as we move forward, uh, for other ways to implement the affordable housing strategy. But did just want to draw council's attention that the, the bonus system is different. Uh, when you think about a multifamily district, just generally out in the city versus the growth corridor that has very deliberate incentive systems in place.
So if we decide to do a citywide MFT, will that be done in time for these developers to take advantage of that incentive?
Yeah, yes, that, uh, well, again, that'll contend on council action, but we will be bringing back recommendations, uh, way in advance of any potential developer wanting to take advantage of them. So sometime in the first quarter of next year is likely when you'll see the MFT work.
Okay, thank you for everybody for answering my questions. Okay, Councilmember Barksdale.
Um, my, my comments, uh, any additional comments I would have made have been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, is there, you can raise your hand if you need to ask any more questions or make any more comments. Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Zon, Councilmember Lee. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I wanted to ask Mac, uh, thank you, Mayor, for all your questions. I, the MFT, the council gave direction to bring that back to expand it citywide quite some time ago, maybe even pre-COVID. Um, so will we have that ready teed up for action first quarter of next year? Mac?
Um, yes, Councilmember Robertson, the, the MFT, uh, we will be bringing back, uh, the results. We went out and did a, a number of stakeholder outreach to see where people were seeing the necessary tweaks. And there were multiple components of that. And so you'll have a chance to discuss and work through those things and then give final direction for how you'd like it adopted.
So maybe two meetings, three at the most on that before final adoption? Okay, okay, great. Cause I've been waiting for that to come back for a while. The other thing I would point out, which I think Councilmembers on raised is that as these, once this land use code change, uh, has for C1, adopting C1 is in effect. If we have, uh, properties that want to take advantage of it, there's, the city always has the opportunity to partner with them using the 0.1% sales tax, where we can, for example, buy down greater affordability for some units on a permanent basis. Um, in addition to also, uh, creating the land use code for them to do that. So, and we could also use the MFT tool as well as that tool with the four other comp plan amendments with housing, um, that are on, that we're talking about earlier or, uh, with this agenda item tonight. So I think that there's opportunities, even though it's not mandated to be affordable housing for these comp plan amended properties. I think that there is lots of opportunity and I hope that we're going to continue to talk with developers to make sure that every developer is aware when FTE is available and as well as when we come up with the plan for the 0.1%, that we could use that to take opportunities to make sure we have affordable housing, particularly in the transit corridors, which I believe all four of the properties on tonight's agenda are. So, um, yeah, I'm ready to move forward on this when it comes back. I think this has been a great discussion. Thank you, everyone.
Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I, uh, appreciated my colleagues' comments as well. Um, the one that I did have is when I think about affordable housing is both rentals as well as homeownership. So will this, um, affordable housing C1, um, also, um, encompass both, um, rental units as well as affordable homeownership? Because I do think that that's the other part that we are missing is actually housing that's affordable for purchase so that we can actually, folks can actually generate wealth as part of the homeownership.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Not, okay, Councilmember Lee. And then, oh, sorry, wait a minute. I think Councilmember Stokes, I forgot to call on you. And then Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, um, since the, the question of the, uh, 1%, uh, 0.01% sales taxes come up in different uses, I think it's this, before we start launching into other things on it, I'd like to get a good legal, uh, analysis of exactly what we can or can't do with that. So that we, we don't, uh, because the, you know, it, it's a great opportunity. I think we just need to narrow it down or understand before we kind of think, well, we could use this money for this. And let's focus on that because that actually it'll help us really come together and focus on how we're putting all these pieces together. And we haven't had that yet. So I'd like to see that. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I'm in complete support of affordable housing and the method, the, the plan of using face-based properties, you know, for that purpose, no question about it, because it's a great opportunity. My only concern again is the, uh, intended consequence. You know, we have land use code, zoning codes that's in place for very good reasons. Because the people who live into the areas, they need to know what they, 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 their preference are. And that hasn't been changed. That hasn't been going through the process. You know, the staff's outreach, have they talked to all the property owners? We, you know, I think eventually might change. If our housing is beyond critical enough, you know, maybe people already changed, but we haven't gone through that process. So I'm just concerned that if we do this, we open up a chain, land, land use, uh, pattern that any property, including single family homes, if they have been a religious facility, they can suddenly become a, whatever that might be. We don't know, you know, but it will be for the purpose of affordable housing, encouraging all types of housing to go in there. And that, that's a consequence we need to have the public to step in to say. I think that's why I hear that the planning commission has some concerns. You know, what is the data? What's the process? How, what's the outreach? What is the land use consideration? Have we all been talking about? I think this is a concern that we all will appreciate it. If we recognize that, we need to make some provisions to be specific that, well, this cannot happen. If it happens, it has to happen within a proper legal context. And we need to change the land use. If people support it, it will happen. People doesn't, it doesn't. We cannot just say that, well, this is a loophole that's there. And if you get in there, it becomes a religious face-based facility, then suddenly it becomes a multifamily affordable housing with a lot of incentives, you know, which provides a economic incentive for people who can go do it. That doesn't make sense. You know, that's another fight. So I would not, I, I support the idea of this face-based, uh, property use and conversion as this. No question about it. I would fully support it, just like the council does. But I would want to have a precaution, a, some kind of condition to say that it has to stop, I mean, eh, eh, so that people are not going to consider, well, this is the council decision. So that, that's, that's an intended consequence. We realize that, we need to do something about it. Not just close their eyes and just hope that in the future, something will happen. Then the public will be unhappy about it. So that's my position on it. So I will, I can support it if we have the staff to come up with a provision. Somehow we can prevent, prevent that from happening until we got this proper land use process with planning commission goes through it and we understand what it is, the consequences we may live with. The second question I raised earlier is, I still like to know what are the two dissensions about the, the, the other amendment, just for information. You know, I, I will go along with it, but if they have something that touched me that say, hey, you know, I want to listen more, then I might act differently. But I would like to know that if you have time to have the chairperson, you know, uh, say why the two persons dissented from the decision the commission made. Thank you, Mrs. Berman.
Chairman Goffcar, would you like to respond to that? She's asking why the two dissenting votes, um, on the Glendale property.
So the two dissenting votes and, um, staff, I would ask for you to also jump in. Um, were Commissioner Davidos and, uh, Vice Chair Malacutian. I believe that Commissioner Davidos from the very beginning felt like this property was not inappropriate. Um, shouldn't have just come through the process and was, did not feel like it met even threshold review. So he also felt like it didn't meet, um, the next level of review. Um, and then Cal, Cal, Vice Chair Malacutian essentially agreed with the analysis provided by staff who had recommended that we not move that forward. Um, and then the staff, I kind of will let you speak to your rationale for that. Um, but then the rest of the commission, after robust conversation, I think we had people who are unsure, but after a long conversation, um, voted in favor. So Tara or Amelia, do you want to provide a little detail on the staff and Vice Chair Malacutian's perspective?
Certainly. Um, so included in staff's recommendation to the planning commission, we went through the comprehensive plan criteria. This is, um, specific to the Glendale Country Club Northeast application. Um, that was the only, um, that was the only application that staff, uh, recommended did not meet some of the. So we went through each of the decision criteria, comprehensive plan decision criteria in the code. Um, and so we felt that, um, one of the primary issues is, um, it did not establish a clear nexus between, um, our land use comprehensive, our land use element comprehensive plan policies. And then also our environmental element, uh, policies and then parks and open space. So we evaluated that. Um, so essentially we found that it did not meet all of the comprehensive plan policies. And, um, then the second criteria relates to, does the amendment address interests and changing needs of the entire city? Um, and we evaluated based on that. And we found that the amendment would not enhance the livability of the community. Um, then the third criteria talks through, does, does the application address significantly changed conditions? Um, since the last time the comprehensive plan map was amended or text was amended. And we felt that it actually did meet that criteria. Um, and then the other, the other criteria is, are we able to determine if the property could be suitably developed under potential, the zoning classification that they're hoping to achieve? Um, the site is constrained with critical areas. So at, at this point, it's conjecture whether, you know, how much of density they could really achieve. Um, they, they're, the applicants have indicated that it is, that it is feasible to redevelop, but, um, staff evaluated it based on, uh, feedback from development services and the transportation department and the utilities department.
So Tara, you're talking about staffs. I think we were asking about the two, um, planning commissioners.
And so essentially the, the two dissenting planning commissioners concurred with some of the, uh, issues raised by staff. That was, that was the reason for me going through, through all of that.
Thank you.
And then I, um, I defer to, I'll, I'll have Nicholas Matts also weigh in if I've missed anything. I think the last criteria relates to a public benefit. Um, and then our analysis was that it, it focuses the application justification focus more in a financial perspective rather than an environmental or land use perspective. And Nicholas, did I miss anything, anything you'd like to add in?
Me, thanks.
Okay, great. So I'm going to, um, let Councilmember Barksdale, uh, finish our discussion here.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the, um, colleagues' comments. And just wanted to say that, looking forward to the next step in the process where we will discuss, where the planning commission will discuss those details that Councilmember Lee raised and other councilmembers have raised. Um, and, uh, that, the public engagement and outreach is, will be a part of that cohort as well. So this is the end of this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, um, Deputy Mayor, are you ready to make a motion?
Certainly am, Mayor.
Sorry, sorry. Are we voting on this? I just realized, I, I think we are, aren't we?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Providing to staff.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll move forward. Uh, I move to direct staff repair ordinances, approving the 2020 proposed amendments as recommended by the planning commission and to return with an ordinance documenting the city's annual plan amendment process, all for adoption at a future meeting. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm just asking our procedure matter. Is appropriate for me to offer an amendment?
Um, it, it was like, uh, a second ago. Um, but if it's important to you, we'll retract those votes that we just heard and we'll see if you get a second.
Thank you. I, I made a point and think that I hope everybody heard it. And I support, support the immediacy, the urgency of making this happen, no question about it.
What's your amendment?
I would like to make, have the staff to make a provision of some time set, some specific, uh, specifics tied to the use of this, uh, provision. This, 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 uh, yes, this, this way to convert religious, uh, face-based properties into affordable housing tied to some specific parameter, which will be used when implementation actually takes place.
Okay, that's your motion. Is there a second? Okay, I'm not hearing one, Councilmember Lee, so we will go on with the vote. All those in favor of the proposed motion from Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, unamended, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you again, Chairman Goffcar.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good.
Okay, moving on to our budget update. We're moving right along with this budget process here and I appreciate it. So, um, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this one?
Sure, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, tonight is our fifth serving of the preliminary budget and the focus of tonight's session is on the fire inspection fees and basic life support, um, transport fees. Tonight, uh, we are, we are seeking the council direction to prepare ordinances to council, for council consideration and adoption for the basic life support transport fee. for the basic life support transport fees as, as part of the um, adoption, the overall adoption process. Um, and when we finalize the budget. Um, joining us this evening on our Chief Hagan with the Fire Department, as well as Tony Call, our Director of Finance and Asset Management. Tony is also going to give us an assessment of where we are relative to the budget process and as well as how do we move forward, how the council moves forward is with respect to balancing and the process that will be used in terms of balancing the budget, starting on um, uh, November 23rd of next week. So, Tony?
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. As always, it's pleasant to be back here with you this evening. Uh, this is, again, as Mr. Miyaki said, an update on fire inspection fees and uh, basic life support transport fees. And I'll also give a, a piece on from now till the end of when we adopt the budget. Next slide, please. Tonight, we are seeking feedback on the update on fire inspection fees and specific direction to prepare fee ordinances uh, to bring back on uh, with the, with the adoption package, the basic life support fee. Next slide, please. Our agenda this evening is, we'll do a, a brief piece on the calendar, review the budget, the final meetings as we head towards a budget adoption. I'll once again recap the many actions it will take for final adoption. And then I'll turn the presentation over to Chief Hagan, who will speak about the fire inspection fee and the basic life support transport fee. Next slide, please. So we've seen this a few times before. I'm going to hit it pretty quickly here. We started back in June. We've had two public hearings. Um, we are now in the space where we've got the weekly updates coming back to you on the budget each week. The next meeting on November 23rd will be our last uh, public hearing. Uh, in addition, on the 23rd, we have also reserved study session time to start the process of balancing the budget. And then adoption later happened on December 7th or December 14th, based on your council direction. So from a detailed perspective, this is where we've been. The city manager presented his preliminary budget on October 19th. Uh, development services fees were presented on October 26th. At that time, council did give a direction to bring back those fee ordinances with the budget package. On November 2nd, uh, the Human Services Commission was here and also presented their uh, rates on the CBDG funding. Again, council gave direction to bring back those ordinances uh, on, with the adoption package. On November 9th, utility rates um, was here and again received direction to proceed forward to with adoption there. Tonight, we have the fire inspection fees and the basic life support transport fees. Um, on November 23rd, we will have the public hearing. And then the area in blue will be looking for council feedback and potential direction for adoption on the 23rd as well, which will take us either to December 7th or December 14th for budget adoption based on council direction. So taking a moment and taking a step back to get from here to the budget process. Uh, November 23rd, again, we have our public hearing that will be held first piece of the meeting. Uh, after the public hearing, we do have study session time. Uh, staff is requesting that council members provide any proposed adjustments to the budget on the November 23rd package. So uh, uh, in order to do that, both myself or any other staff member is available to help any council member who would be interested in bringing forth a proposed adjustment, proposed adjustment. We will need to bring forward balanced adjustments. So if you do have an adjustment that you would like to make, uh, we'll need to make sure it's a balanced adjustment that has revenues and offsets or whatever else might be with the idea that you have to bring forward. Again, I'm available as well as City Manager Miyaki and any other staff member. Depending on the number of adjustments that come forward and the context of those adjustments, I think there's two possible outcomes from the 23rd. Uh, staff, uh, council could direct staff to return on December 7th with the full list. Um, and that full list would be like in an Excel spreadsheet and it would show the balancing option for each of those items. And at that point, we would ask for direction to bring back um, for adoption on December 14th. If the list brought forward on November 23rd from whatever council direction you might have is a list in which council feels that it could make a direction to staff on November 23rd, then council could certainly direct staff on November 23rd to bring back the package on December 7th. Um, so there's two possible outcomes to adoption um, based on the feedback we get from each of you on November 23rd. If you have further questions on that, I'm more than happy to answer them. Um, there are a series of adoptions of actions that'll be needed to adopt the budget this year. You can see the list in front of you. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the basic life support fee ordinance. You will notice at the bottom of this slide, because staff is not proposing an adjustment to the fire inspection fee, that ordinance will not need to come before you for adoption. Uh, we will be uh, briefing you on that tonight. So if you do have, unless you otherwise direct, you will not see that in your ordinance package. With that, I will turn it towards uh, Chief Hagan for uh, the fire inspection fee update.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Members of Council and City Manager Miyaki. I have two pieces of business before you this evening. I'd like to provide you with an update on our fire inspection fee and then uh, propose to you an increase in our BLS or basic life support uh, transport fee. Regarding the fire inspection fee, uh, to jog your memory, this was, this was authorized in December of 2018 and implemented January 1st of this year. As you probably remember, we did make two adjustments based on feedback from our community. Uh, first in January and then again, uh, just recently, October 29th. You had requested to be kept updated uh, about this throughout the budget process. And we're not actually proposing any change to the fee ordinance this evening. Uh, rather, what we're doing is we're getting in sync with the regular biennial budget process. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that you gave us four financial objectives when we started this. One, that we remain regionally uh, competitive. That we have fees that are predictable and understandable. That we support our citywide cost recovery objectives. And that we offer a fair price for the services provided. And then furthermore, that we maintain a nexus between the level of effort we're putting into conducting these inspections and the fees that we collect from the members of the community. So there are 5,296 inspections in our system. Those are done uh, by both the firefighters in the stations and our fire protection officers, depending on the level of complexity of that inspection. Uh, as of a couple of days ago, we're 70% complete for the year. And until the most recent COVID directions from the governor, we felt pretty good about, about getting all of them done this year. Um, we'll try our best. Regarding the current uh, fee schedule, as a reminder, our fire inspection fee is a sum of three things. A base rate of $180, the square footage, which rates on a, a number from zero to nine, so the size of the inspection. And then its classification or its degree of difficulty. So the fee equals the base rate times the square footage times the occupancy factor. And I spent some time with Travis Ripley, our, our acting fire marshal, to get a, so I could share with you a flavor for kind of what this means. Uh, our lowest invoice was actually for $36 to the owner of a small condominium. And our largest invoice was for over $7,500 for the Safeway distribution plant. The fastest inspection we did this year was 30 minutes in duration. And the longest one took several days to complete, including code research, onsite time, and then the paperwork afterwards. I'd also like to point out that uh, we have different frequencies for our inspections. Our hazardous occupancies, we do twice a year. Multifamily buildings without sprinkler system protection, we do annually. Buildings that have restaurants without sprinklers, we do annually. And everything else in our system, we do every other year. Next slide, please. Well, again, I wanted to let you know that we, we uh, really appreciate um, you know, the two extra inspectors we got a couple of years ago. We have been very diligent in trying to achieve the objectives you set for us. Uh, we're on track for full cost recovery and we are um, very cognizant of demonstrating that nexus between level of effort and the fee we're charging. As we've talked about in so many different areas, this year has been challenging with, with COVID-19. We have encountered some businesses uh, that have yet to reopen. Some of our business owners have been uh, a little wary about having us on site to do inspections. And I, I credit our uh, prevention staff with uh, coming up with a pretty innovative idea, which is doing inspections uh, via FaceTime. We've got some inspections completed by just asking uh, the occupancy or business owner to sort of walk around and shine their phone or their iPad on certain things that we ask them to do. And we've, we've been able to complete the work that way remotely. Uh, another example is we've had restaurants that we would ordinarily inspect their kitchen and their hood vent, their protection systems, let's say every six months. And those restaurants in some cases have been uh, not opened or only opened sporadically. So we've been able to actually relax the timeline on which we make those inspections because their hood vents just haven't been um, seeing a lot of action. So what I'm saying is that we've been flexible. Um, we figured out how to do uh, remote fire drills, excuse me, virtual fire drills and maintain that flexibility. Next slide, please. A couple of meetings ago, you directed us to take a look and say, is there a way that we could uh, have affordable housing units not have to deal with the fire inspection fee? And I wanted to let you know that we've done a lot of work on that. Um, and we're embarking on a holistic review of affordable housing exemptions and fees. And that work will be taken up uh, in the first quarter of 2021. So instead of asking your direct, answering your direct question, we're going to bring that answer to you in a more comprehensive manner in a few short months. Next slide, please. I'd like to draw your attention now uh, to our second subject, which is uh, our BLS transport fee. And I'd just like to highlight for you the difference between BLS, basic life support, and ALS, which is advanced life support. So this evening, we're talking about transports that Bellevue firefighters perform on our aid cars at the EMT level. We would propose that we increase this fee from $638 to $750 to be more in line with our regional partners, what they're charging, and also to address inflation. We have charged for BLS transports since 2012. The last time uh, the fee was increased was in 2014. It's been six years since we have adjusted our fee. And I wanted you to know, I also did a little bit of homework on this. And I learned that of our 14 comparators, after we would raise our fee, we would still be uh, below the middle of the pack. The most expensive fee to transport, um, and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, I have to apologize to you, I got this wrong this morning. The high cost is Valley Regional, Verfa, and they charge $1,700. And the low fee is King County District 50, which is Sky Comish, they charge $575. So again, we would uh, propose that we raise our fee from $638 to $750, which still puts us just below the middle of the pack and offers, I feel, a really great value for the service that our community gets. Uh, no individual needing transport to a hospital is denied that transport based on age, sex, race, or financial situation. Next slide, please. Any Bellevue resident that we transport, uh, we bill what their insurance pays and we rate, we waive any residual fee. Any Bellevue resident without insurance can apply for financial assistance through us and have that amount waived. This does happen on a routine basis. It's happened two times in the last three years and we were able to accommodate uh, both people that came to us and said they had really a legitimate trouble paying that bill. Um, we maintain a small fund to be able to help out in those situations. And any person who is transported by us, who is not a resident, can also apply for financial assistance and have the entire amount waived if they qualify. This does happen occasionally, very rarely, we've been able to accommodate the very few instances where this has happened. Next slide, please. So this evening, um, I would be willing to accept any comments or questions or direction you have about the fire inspection fee. And I would ask you to direct us to prepare a fee ordinance for final adoption in December of the increase to the basic life support transport fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hagan. Okay, so um, I'm going to call on council members in the following order. Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Stokes, Lee, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, councilmembers on and myself. So starting with Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, I appreciate uh, the presentation. I, I am so pleased that you really looked at making sure that the inspection fee is tied to effort so that it really is a cost recovery and that there's a nexus there. I think that that's really important. Um, and as well as the basic life support fee, um, I think that, that uh, being in the middle of the pack is great. I have um, a couple of questions that I wanted to follow up from something that I put outside this topic area, but in the Fire Department budget, that I would uh, let my colleagues know is now in the memory bank books, number 26 through 29. I had some fire, um, Fire Department budget questions. So the question is specifically with regard to the Training Administration, um, FTE cut that is in this current budget. I, I, how long have we had that position in our budget? Is it a new thing or is it something that we've had for a long time?
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson, for that question. Uh, I, I do know that we have had that position continuously in the Bellevue Fire Department for 25 years.
Okay. That's, so, and so when we cut budgets across the board in the last recession, that position then survived those cuts if it's been there for 25 years. Um, if, if we, what does that position do?
Thank you. Um, the admin position down at the Bellevue Joint Training Center um, is really valuable to the uniformed staff that are down there. Uh, that position provides administrative support to really all activities that happen at the training center. That includes uh, a very high level of activity when we have new hire training called recruit training, uh, incumbent training, which is keeping the skills sharp for our existing firefighters who routinely are down there, uh, performing individual skills and also multi-company operations. And then, as you know, we're also the host for regional training uh, in our zone. We're in a multi-department training consortium. So that position, to directly answer your question, that position uh, handles correspondence, calendaring, scheduling, uh, the use of the facility, tracking all this training on an individual and company basis on multiple computer programs, and really provides indirect support to uh, the battalion training commander and the officers that are down there using the facility uh, in an administrative capacity.
Okay. Thank you, that's really helpful. And the cut saves the department or the city $80,000, right? And I, I thought it was really interesting that the increase in the basic life support um, fees raises $80,000. So I thought there was a little symmetry there. So if we wanted to um, restore that cut, would using an, another increase to the basic life support fee be one way that we can do that?
I'm sorry, could you, could you just repeat your question, Councilmember Robertson?
Sure, so that's an $80,000 cut and the current increase uh, for the basic life support transport is $80,000, which of course is appropriated elsewhere per the draft budget. I'd like to, I guess I'd like to, this is probably a Tony question. If we wanted to add a little bit more to the basic life support fee from the recommended amount to a little bit higher, since we're still relatively in the middle of the pack, um, I'd like to know what that number would be to raise the amount of money to restore the cut of the training admin. And I, if you don't have it now, I, I'm sorry, Tony, I didn't call you in advance to let you know I was going to ask. Um, but it'd be good to have that information added to the memory bank. Um, so because, because especially as we are going to be adding a lot new of firefighters for Station 10 in the years to come, I think that this position is going to be pretty important. And um, if, if we, if we're, it's in the budget to cut right now, there's no plan at this point to restore that cut, is there? In like a year or two years? There's nothing, right?
That's correct.
So, okay, so if we cut that, I, I know that from the last time we did some cuts to um, our departments, it took probably five to six years to restore those cuts, which is a long time and doesn't true up really well with the opening of Station 10 for that position. So I'm going to want to talk about this more um, in probably next week and internally with staff. But I wanted to ask those questions on the record so my colleagues could hear the answers and also to highlight it, that it's in the memory, in the new memory bank uh, in our council packet. So, but otherwise, I'm, I, you know, I may want to recommend that So, but otherwise, I'm, I, you know, I may want to recommend that we add a little bit more to the basic life support fee to cover this cut. Um, but otherwise, I'm supportive of the BLS fee, um, which hasn't been raised in six years, especially because we do um give, you know, cuts or not cuts to it, but we do um forgive it for people that can't afford it. It's generally insurance covering it. Um, we had a hospital ride in my family last year, not in Bellevue, and it was a lot more than this, let me tell you. So um anyway, thank you very much. And I'm also supportive of the fire fees. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate you coming back holistically on the affordable housing package of how we can support that and work next year. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. And I'm, I'm gonna take that as a homework item to me that I will evaluate the, the rate that we would recommend to do that work that you suggested to retain that position. And I'll have that, I'll have that information for you next time.
Thank you. That would be great. If you could send that to the whole council, that'd be great.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I too appreciate very much uh your presentation and all the work you've done and your uh, I think really innovative, taking a look at these things and the way you approach it um from a, a very comprehensive uh view is, is very much appreciated. Um, good results. It's tough in these times with budget and everything else and you're doing a tremendous amount of work with the, in the COVID um bubble here. And I think that's great, too. I um appreciate what Councilmember Robertson just said on two grounds. One, uh, and it's not exactly related to this in a sense, but on the basic life support, I guess that's a a, a thing to look at. I would uh agree to take a look at that if you can. Um, not too much more, but um that's a possibility. On the position that she was talking about, um, that uh I was kind of surprised because you sounded like you were very much in favor and what, what a great the work that was being done by the person there, this position, but because of other factors, you know, you had to make some cuts. Uh, but if you're at all looking at coming, having this again, and it sounds like a position that is very, very helpful. Um, and, and again, going back to, I know from, wasn't there, but in terms of uh talking to people about the uh problems of recovering from the recession, it's very difficult when you cut a position and um and you lose somebody who has been there a long time, or you lose a lot of um of uh knowledge, and then you have to come back and put it in place again. It's difficult. So I would also appreciate looking at this. If this is a position that is, is helpful as you have, I, I don't say if it is. It sounds like a very uh positive and useful position. Uh, and um if you would really like to have that uh going forward, uh, let's do, take a look at where we could uh how we could do that to uh uh save that position and not be in a position later on of taking a lot of time and having to retrain people and and, you know, disrupting the program. So I would, and it's, it, it is a lot of money in one ways, but it's not. And for the benefit, uh, I would certainly appreciate the, you know, hearing your responses to the questions that Councilmember Robertson raised. Otherwise, I think it's just great and thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as you know, I always regard that the government's function, primary function is to uh have a protection of life and welfare uh for its people, the residents and fire department is one of those I highly regard, you know, as the very well-respected and uh uh, you know, the, 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 the people that we depend on. And you, the Bellevue Fire Department has always come through with the highest level of integrity and, and camaraderie ship and, you know, family environment where everybody performs. And uh, but so I share the same uh feeling as uh, uh, you know, others that uh we don't want to lose sight of uh losing, you know, somebody or something that is a key to your performance in terms of your function uh to meet those uh, you know, expectations uh lightly, you know. But of course, same time, you know, I don't want to uh micromanage your decision you make. You are the one that's in the position of making choices and life is making choices. And so, but I just want to assure you that uh, you know, you have my support and I hope the council's support uh when you have made, you have to make choices, uh, but not to compromise yourself or the department because those things, life and welfare cannot be compromised. So I hope you understand that. And uh, you know, you have practical resources and support. And but it's up to you to make your uh, you know, decisions and choices uh of what's the best way to manage your department. Uh, so thank you very much. I support your proposal and always. And uh, so, you know, I always support the decision you make and just make sure that you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. And uh, thanks, Chief, for uh for the great presentation and all the work that you all are doing. And I just have one question. It's gonna come related to tech. Have you all considered an app to support the uh support fire inspections? Remote or virtual?
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. That's, that's almost the perfect setup. Uh, I'd like to introduce Acting Fire Marshal Travis Ripley to tell you about the new app that we just went to that I can't remember the name of. Travis?
Uh, we, we've implemented uh, it's called Streamline and it's uh the program that actually tracks the um for us, uh, the entire program and helps. Uh, it, it's definitely streamlined a lot of, of paperwork and, and process for us. And, and I'm sure that we'll continue to look at um technology, you know, as we kind of embark on these tough times of COVID and such to, to manage getting into these places and doing our job.
Great, thank you. And I support the uh exploring ways to fund the admin role through uh basic life support fees. Somebody's gotta do it and if they're not doing it, somebody's absorbing that, that work, right? So.
Thank you.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief Hagan, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, wonderful presentation and uh if you haven't heard recently, thank you again to you and your entire uh department for the great work that they're doing during COVID. Um, tremendous, tremendous effort during very trying times. So yes, happy to uh move this forward and supportive of both the fees um and, and, and the BLS. And thank you for the correction there um from, from this morning. Uh, that's even more than what you originally uh thought that, uh, that number was. And that's quite expensive. Um, certainly, I think um those in Bellevue are getting a tremendously good deal. That is tremendously good value um for, for, for that service. And I uh wholeheartedly support uh Councilmember Robertson's idea. Um, if that's the way that we can uh fund and maintain, what I feel is a very important position uh with the Bellevue Fire Department, that, that training administrator to uh maintain the high quality of training and uh for, for, for our department is so, is so crucial. And uh I would absolutely support that if that's able to do. So thanks for taking that homework assignment and finding out exactly what that uh number uh needs to be at. Uh, but anyway, that we can maintain that position, I certainly would uh be in favor of, especially since um, you know, it made it through the last time. We had a, a budget crunch, right? During the um, the recession of a what, oh nine, oh or, yeah, oh nine, ten. So clearly, there's a need to maintain this and it's been a position within the department for quite some times, it would appear. So look forward to seeing what you bring back to us. But uh, thanks again for everything you do and for uh being here this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Zon?
Um, yes, I too appreciate Chief, all of the efforts of the fire department and your leadership. Um, especially with the virtual inspections, because I know that um Ellen I and building inspectors have been doing virtual. So I appreciate that we're following suit to keep everybody safe, including our firefighters. So appreciate that very much. Uh, I also support um finding ways to retain the training administrator because to me, that's one of the, the really important things to keep our um, our staff as safe as possible is that we're offering them state-of-the-art training and making sure that that happens. Um, the holistic view of the affordable housing uh fee exemptions, I think, is a really uh good way to look at that because I think it creates a centralized tracking as well as really transparency and accountability to what we're doing related to affordable housing. So thank you for that. Um, I did have um one question. And that is, as I think about COVID and people that are teleworking versus being in the office, are we finding that there are different, that we're, our call volumes are changing or increasing? So that's actually one of my questions is, as people, as there might be more people at home, are we finding that that there's more fire calls? Because there um, there's some fire risk. And um, yeah, so just wanted to understand a bit more about that in terms of as you're budgeting for the future, what you're seeing in terms of changing patterns.
Thank you, Councilmembers on for that question. And, and you asked about call volumes during COVID. Uh, we have seen an overall decrease in call volume of about twenty one percent this year. But we're also finding a really interesting fact, and that's that uh, we're having way more serious and significant uh medical calls. For example, serious heart attacks and strokes coupled with this uh decrease in overall volume, the number of actual fires we're having is remaining fairly constant. Um, so we're not rolling out the door as much, but we, when we do roll out, we tend to be rolling out for more serious types of uh alarms, both on the medical and the fire side. Uh, just last week, we had a significant uh rescue at a, at a construction site in a pit. We had a couple house fires. Uh, we had several CPRs. And so it's just really that interesting combination, overall less volume, uh, but more significant incidents, uh, those are on the rise. And that might lead us to assume that perhaps people are still a little bit wary of, of uh of going to a hospital for treatment, which is something we're really trying to focus on, the messaging that hospitals are safe. They're ready for you. And if you, if you have chest pain, if you're not feeling well, please call us and we'll come take care of you. It's, it's nothing to fear. So interesting statistics this year. Thank you.
So does that mean that, because I know that Councilmember Barksdale had asked about the Bellevue Cares Program earlier, are we seeing more calls for the Bellevue Cares Program as well? Related to folks that may be feeling stressed and not feeling comfortable going to the hospital or whatnot?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on giving you an exact number because I'd have to check, but I know they uh I know their utilization is certainly not less than it was the previous year. And the Bellevue Cares Program was one of only a couple of providers that was actually out helping people in need throughout the entire uh experience of COVID that we've had in twenty twenty. So it's still a highly utilized uh feature uh in our community. And if you would allow me, I will get back to you with some more specific numbers about, about CARES referrals.
Well, that would be great because I think it's a very important program. And then Mayor, what, is this the time to ask any questions of Tony about the process of the, the budget piece? Um, and specifically the memory bank and how things get on there?
I'm gonna ask Tony to do a recap when we're done with all the questions and comments. I think we still have me. And so
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Then I'll wait.
We can uh answer, Tony, you can answer Councilmember Zon's question there. Um, so uh, thank you very much for this presentation. And Chief Hagan, you just gave a really good description of why we don't want our hospitals crowded with COVID patients if we can help it. Because more people die from non-COVID illnesses uh than COVID when our hospitals are completely full and uh people can't get in or don't go in for uh heart attack and, and things that would be easy to fix if they were receiving the care they needed. So thank you for explaining um the, the need for people to get the care that they need. Um, I, I really am concerned about downtown being our fastest growing neighborhood. And the fact that it, the population's growing so quickly and delaying the fire station ten and, and, and staffing and things. And um, I, I, I have concerns about that. I'm very interested in the answer to Jennifer, um Councilmember Robertson's question. So I'll look forward to that. But my question would be if you do get transported to the hospital and you don't have insurance that covers that and you cannot afford to pay that, what happens?
What actually happens is um our, our EMS staff has somebody who discreetly takes that information and evaluates the request basically to avoid, avoid the bill. And we have a uh, we have a sum of money set aside that we use to cover those very rare instances. So um, you know, we like to get the message out there that nobody should be afraid of calling nine one one for fear of a bill. Uh, we, we take people to the hospital, we, we treat their need, we get them where they need to go. Um, we, we turn away absolutely nobody. So again, if you're a Bellevue resident and you are insured, we, we, we bill what your insurance pays and we waive the rest. And then we have uh this fund that, that would help individuals in the situation that you mentioned. So uh, if people are sick or injured, they need, they needed treatment and a trip to the hospital, our firefighters uh treat them, they load them up, they take them where they need to go. Uh, and we sort it out later. And the few instances where we've had requests for assistance or complete uh waiving of the bill, uh, we do what we have to do to take care of it.
And I know from personal experience, your uh crew is really good at talking to family members who maybe do not need to have the transport and giving them the option to drive themselves, the, the patient themselves, the family members. So I appreciate that. So um, Tony, can you do a little recap here and um help me craft direction for, for your staff?
Certainly, Mayor. I'd be happy to do that. I'll also try to answer Councilmember Zon's question at the same time. Um, so um, what I've heard this evening is that uh staff will come back with a increase to the basic life support fee that would accommodate the eighty thousand dollars of the admin person. So we'll come back with that. It'll be part of your memory bank. And so we'd be looking for direction on your basic life support fee after you get that information, which probably wouldn't that be till next week. So we won't be looking for act, for direction on that till next week. So we'll bring that back in the memory bank. Um, I also heard a few of the questions that need to get put in the memory, memory bank specifically around Bellevue Cares and the referral program. And Councilmembers on, um, how items have gotten in the memory bank are primarily those that I've either heard from, directly from a council meeting or it was emailed to me. If you have questions or if any other council member has questions that have been asked that we have either overlooked or misunderstood or didn't get in the memory bank, I would be happy to talk to anyone and ensure that they get in this week. So um, I would be happy to make those phone calls. So if you are interested in that, I'd be pleased to do that for you. So, does that answer everybody's questions? And then next week is also on the twenty third, we'll be looking for any uh adjustments you may have to the budget after the public hearing so that we can start preparing uh for budget adoption either the seventh or the fourteenth, depending on council direction.
So I think we have consensus. Pardon me?
A question for Tony?
Uh, let me just finish what I was gonna say and then we'll do that. So I think we have consensus on the adjustment of the, of the inspection fee. And then we're gonna want to get that, yeah, more information, I think, before we give further direction. Is that what you're, and that works with your schedule?
Of course.
Okay. So I heard Councilmember Lee and Councilmembers on. So Councilmember Lee, I heard you first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tony, uh, when would you uh think that you can get back to us with your memory bank that you receive from us?
So we are publishing with each packet. So we received a list of questions today from at least one council member. We'll be having those as many as we can answer in the memory bank by Thursday. In order for council to start to be able to provide us direction on the twenty third, we need to get answers into this week's memory bank. So I would need your questions no later than probably tomorrow afternoon if you have questions.
For those, for the, you have already, you have mine already. For those you already received, are you still gonna get back to us by the twenty third or earlier?
I believe, I believe, sir, your questions might be in the memory bank today. I can look for you.
Oh, so that will be coming back to us when you say in the memory bank?
They're attached to the packet each week, yes.
Thank you very much.
Anytime, sir. Councilmember Zon?
Um, yes, I think mine was a procedural question because I know that we've talked several times about some questions that I have. And so I think procedurally, perhaps I missed the, the process where emails And so I think procedurally, perhaps I missed the, the process where emails are in memory banks and uh, phone calls are not. So I don't see any of our discussions in the memory bank. And so I just want to make sure that I'm clear about procedure, um, so that um, the conversations that we might be having and questions I'm asking are clearly documented. So I will follow up with you to make sure that those pieces are actually in here. And I'm not sure if other council members had that same understanding or lack of understanding.
Thank you, Councilmember. I apologize if there was a miscommunication. I will certainly make sure that they get in.
Okay, Councilmember Barstel, I see you.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, just one quick question about the adjustments process. Um, in terms of information that would be helpful as part of making the case for the adjustment, I know you say, you're saying balance. Is it helpful for us to, what's helpful for us to include as part of that adjustment in, in the discussion?
Councilmember Barstel, could you repeat one more time? I'm not sure I quite got the whole, the whole comment.
As part of the budget adjustment, what's helpful for us to include as part of the adjustment, adjustment for this?
Certainly. Um, I think it would be most helpful on uh, if we had a clear understanding of, of what your request is. So we can ensure that it's been costed correctly if there is a cost attached to it, depending on what you're looking at. Um, I think that would be very helpful for us to be able to do. It's also important that we find an offsetting, if you're looking for an increase in cost, what the offsetting um, either reduction is or revenue increases in order to pay for it. So we need to be able to prevent a balanced uh, proposal in front of council. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard from everybody. You have direction. So um, we will hear back from you next week, maybe?
Yes, you will.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna take a break. Um, it's about eight thirty-five. So let's come back at eight forty-five. I'll see you here. Would you like to introduce our next item?
Sure. Um, this is the uh, third and final um, study session item um, this evening in front of the council. And it's the review, the uh, recommendation, the recommended environmental stewardship plan this evening. And tonight's staff will present the recommended uh, plan to the council. Um, the draft plan was released for public comment on September twenty-fourth. Staff will also speak to the comments received and how the recommended plan addresses uh, many of the public's uh, feedback we receive. Um, this topic um, uh, was last before again, the council on September fourteenth for an update and discussion with the K four C uh, joint commitments. And tonight's staff is requesting some direction uh, with regard to adopting of the recommended um, stewardship plan to occur at a future meeting. So joining us this evening again are, is our community development staff, Matt Cummins, the director, and Neil King, Jennifer Ewing um, as well, uh, who is, would do the bulk of the presentation this evening. Um, as well as uh, Anna McMahon, uh, who's an additional guest from our Resource Conservation Program Manager for the Finance and Asset Management Department. So then I'll turn it over to the community development staff to kick this off.
Thank you, Andrew Miyake. Um, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll make some introductory comments this evening and then hand it off to Ms. Ewing to walk you through the draft plan um, and take questions and feedback from the council. As the city manager indicated, um, we're bringing back to you a full draft plan for your consideration. Uh, Ms. Ewing's gonna walk through the public outreach process, which has been extensive and robust as we've gone through um, this. As you might imagine, there are a number of folks that are very interested in the city's environmental work going forward. And you've seen a number of comments that have come in through public comment over the last several city council meetings commenting on various aspects of the plan. We believe that we've struck a, a good balance for the council as you've asked us to be uh, forward leaning and aggressive in the field of environmental stewardship while maintaining a balance with business needs and business community. We've been speaking with all of our various stakeholders across all the various um, areas, uh, both the development community, the business community, the various associations, Chamber of Commerce, BDA, uh, and equivalent. And taken all of that feedback and incorporated it into the plan. Um, and we believe that it addresses the council's needs as you look to advance those environmental goals going forward. Maintaining our moniker as city in a park and thinking about the natural ecosystems and still allowing ourselves to grow in a very smart way.
Excuse me, Matt. Um, I apologize. Councilmember Stokes has dropped off our meeting. We'd like to just halt here for one second and see if we can get him back on. So um, it's not just a matter of coming back. He's actually disconnected. So can we hold on for just a second here? I know Charmaine's um, working on it. Charmaine, can you give Councilmember Stokes a call?
Yeah, I'm doing that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miyake, what do you suggest we do here?
Um, I think we should go ahead uh, and begin the presentation, given the hour, Mayor.
Okay.
You could always um, uh, you know, follow back up with uh, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, all right. Sorry to interrupt you, Matt. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so in finishing up my introductory comments, we do think this strikes a balance between all the competing interests and thinking about how to advance the overall environmental goals of the city. Uh, the various components of the plan that touch or affect uh, commissions and boards within the city have been presented to those commissions and feedback has been taken and incorporated. The same is true internally across the leadership team and, and other departments. And so the totality of all of that is what you see in the draft plan that's been out for public comment. So with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Ms. Ewing to walk through the draft plan tonight. Um, and then myself and Assistant Director Emile King and our staff are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, uh, Mac and um, City Manager Miyake, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Um, I'm excited to be presenting the draft plan or recommended plan to you this evening. I want to make sure you're able to see, um, can you see that PowerPoint right now? Get that in. Okay. All right. So um, as uh, Mac mentioned, we will be requesting direction regarding the adoption of the plan um, at a future meeting. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to provide a brief overview of our, you know, most recent outreach process. A recap of the direction received to date and then really dive into more of the details of the plan and uh, talk through some of the highlights of the different actions in the, in the various focus areas and then request direction from council.
Jennifer, this is Charmaine. Can I pause you for a second? I just wanted to announce that Councilmember Stokes is back in the meeting, just so everyone's aware. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so to recap the direction we have received to date, we've had a number of touch points with council, most recently uh, just about two months ago in September. And then prior to that, uh, last November, uh, we were supposed to present to council in the spring, but that was delayed due to COVID. But we've heard from council really a desire to build on our work to date. Um, to really be bold and, and leading edge if possible. Uh, to, you know, not only set, you know, some long-term goals, but to also really uh, have some more shorter-term targets and actions and things we can do that will put us on a path towards achieving our goals. And then lastly, to, to lead by example uh, through our city operations. Uh, we've, as, as Mac mentioned, we've had uh, three rounds of outreach, public outreach also throughout the process. You know, doing similar engagement internally, uh, because this plan really touches on the work of a number of different departments. Um, you know, starting focusing outreach more at a high level on our goals and targets. Uh, then uh, earlier this year, the outreach was focused more on specific actions for the plan. Talking to, you know, our community, to various focus groups with members of the business community and other environmental nonprofits and other stakeholders. And uh, again, going to uh, all the boards and commissions. Uh, and then most recently, uh, we released the draft plan on September twenty-fourth. Um, and did another round of public outreach and engagement, you know, really focused on the draft plan with an online town hall. And a really brief survey on engagingbellevue.com uh, where we received about a hundred responses plus, you know, a number of emails that came through uh, to council. So what we've heard from this outreach, you know, we're trying to summarize comments from, you know, a hundred-plus people. Although uh, you know, we heard from a mix of, of residents and um, you know, various uh, business and other stakeholders from the community. From our residents, a lot of what we heard was, you know, a desire to continue to try to strengthen the plan. In particular, the energy section, uh, we've heard, you know, similarly to what we heard during the open comment desires to review and possibly update the plan annually, uh, to have some sort of citizen advisory body um, to, you know, oversee or provide input into the implementation of the plan. And then we've heard, you know, a desire for, for really more leading ad action, leading edge actions and uh, timelines for the actions in the plan and that sort of thing. From some of our uh, stakeholder groups, we presented uh, just last week to the Bellevue Chamber Policy Group. Um, and we anticipate we'll likely receive a letter from them, but they, um, it was late last week, so that hasn't come in yet. One of the, the main questions they had was around, you know, the impact of the plan um, on housing affordability. Um, and then, you know, we, we've heard from PSE. And you know, they kind of outlined a number of the areas where the city already works closely with PSE on, you know, various energy efficiency projects, electric vehicle charging, uh, renewable energy. Um, so you know, overall wanting to continue a lot of that um, collaborative uh, working relationship we have. And then PSE offered some comments kind of more broadly around their position around um, building electrification, uh, that being kind of something they're hearing from, in, talked about in, in other cities in their, in their service territory. So shifting gears to talk about the actions in each focus area. Um, I just, I've included a slide to kind of recap the goals and targets, just sort of for some context. And I'll also speak to um, how we're addressing the feedback as I, as I talk through the different actions in the plan. So starting with a climate change focus area and the goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions eighty percent by twenty fifty and fifty percent by twenty thirty. This focus area is, is uh, very interconnected to the other aspects of the plan, in particular um, the, the energy and mobility and land use uh, sections. So a number of those strategies will also support uh, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. For the actions we have in the climate uh, focus area, we have a number of, of different actions in there related to uh, better understanding some of our possible vulnerabilities uh, to the changing climate and how that might impact some of our long-term planning around our stormwater systems, um, that sort of thing. Also wanting to get some better data on the air quality in Bellevue, in particular, some of the neighborhoods, you know, adjacent to our freeways. Uh, and understand, um, you know, what, what's happening there and then really uh, take into account any sort of mitigation strategies as we do look to uh, have more development in neighborhoods such as East Main and Wilberton and Bell Red, close to freeways. How can we ensure, um, you know, good air quality in, in those developments close to the freeway? And then, you know, of course, continuing our, our collaborative work with the K four C. Uh, it's kind of um, mostly a coincidence, but you know, a couple of our other eastside cities are completing their climate or sustainability plans around now. So I think there's a number of areas where we might be able to actually work together uh, during the implementation, along with continuing to work with the county. And then with the state legislative interests, a number of the, uh, to achieve our goals in the plan, there's, you know, that will require a mix of both city actions and some actions at the state level. So uh, the city's um, legislative interests already include a number of different environmental-related um, statements of policy. And so, you know, there's a, a couple of areas where some policy language could be added as part of the legislative agenda process. On the energy side, again, we have the goal for a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty forty-five and reducing our energy use thirty percent by twenty fifty. Um, you know, this, as I mentioned earlier, was kind of one of the areas where we heard some interest um, from our residents in trying to strengthen the plan. Um, you know, this, this is kind of one focus area where there's actions happening at both, you know, the state level and also, you know, trying to think through what makes sense for, for Bellevue to take on. In particular, in light of the, the State Clean Buildings Act, which was passed uh, last year. And that has some requirements for um, large commercial buildings to analyze their energy use and uh, report on that and then actually make improvements to their buildings if they're not meeting certain energy performance thresholds. So that's one strategy where we're looking to provide technical assistance uh, to buildings in Bellevue. Um, monitor how that program rolls out. Uh, and, and also the state will be offering some early adopter incentives. So we really want to see Bellevue buildings that have to comply with the program or, you know, can also don't, don't actually have to comply, but can also take advantage of those incentives. We want to really um, support those buildings in, in achieving that. Then also looking at what might some options be for, you know, more medium-sized buildings in Bellevue. Uh, and also tracking how that state um, bill or state legislation is implemented. Um, where, you know, in terms of energy use, you know, we're looking at how we can both conserve energy and increase renewable energy for conserving energy, looking at, you know, both commercial and multifamily buildings and then also, you know, single-family buildings. So there are already a number of different home energy retrofit programs that the city offers through, you know, our weatherization funding. PSE offers a number of programs. I think we really want to understand where there might be some gaps there. You know, in particular, maybe for lower moderate income residents who maybe don't quite qualify for the home weatherization, but maybe aren't, you know, able to take advantage of, you know, some of the P and PSE incentives. Um, trying to, to, you know, fill some of those holes that we think might exist. And then finally, to look at our incentives around green building and how we might further incentivize uh, new construction to go beyond the code. For materials management and waste, we have the goal to have zero waste by twenty fifty. Uh, a couple of the, the strategies here for achieving this, um, you know, in particular, we have some room for improvement uh, with recycling in our commercial and multifamily buildings. And, you know, as we have more development in Bellevue, uh, you know, of course, that's gonna, you know, primarily be new new residents will You know, of course, that's going to, you know, primarily be new, new residents will mostly be in multifamily buildings and of course we'll have a lot of job growth as well. We really want to make sure those new buildings have the space they need to allow for, you know, three different waste streams. That sort of thing. And then also, you know, there is some state legislation around banning plastic bags, but we've heard a lot of interest in looking at how we could potentially phase out styrofoam and other single-use plastics. And then of course, you know, we have a pretty robust outreach and education program through our utilities department and are looking to, you know, continue a lot of that work. And, you know, always kind of fine tune and, and they're always looking for where there's, you know, opportunities for improvement in, in recycling and where those efforts can have kind of the most bang for the buck. On the natural system side, the goals are around increasing our tree canopy and increasing access for our residents to be within a third of a mile of a park, open space or trail. So in terms of our tree canopy, you know, the, the big strategies here are really looking to update our tree codes to try to minimize tree losses or when trees do need to be removed, that we are, you know, sufficiently mitigating for that. And then to achieve the 40% tree canopy goal, we are, you know, we're estimating that we would need to plant about 75,000 trees. So it's about 2,500 trees a year over the next 30 years. So, you know, we already do plant a couple thousand trees a year roughly. So this would really be kind of building and scaling up some of those efforts and really kind of creating some new efforts, not only planting on city property, but really where there's a lot of opportunity is on private property. So looking at opportunities for like a tree giveaway program partnering with other community organizations to try to increase tree planting. You know, on residential property, school property, and also, you know, to the extent possible on, on city property. And then there's a couple of big environmental related planning efforts underway or soon to be underway. The utilities department is working on a watershed management plan. Where they have had staff, you know, walking and analyzing the health of all of the streams in Bellevue. Gathering some really great data and then we'll be using that to develop a plan for, for all the watersheds in Bellevue. So we'll see, we, more kind of coming out of that around strategies to preserve and enhance the health of our streams. And then similarly with the parks and open space plan, which is due to be updated, I think in 2022. You know, that's really, we'll, we'll see the, the really in-depth planning around how, how, what the strategy will look like to achieve the walkable access to parks goals. On the mobility and land use side, we have a number of different goals and targets related to commute trips. You know, having more electric vehicles in the city. Reducing our per capita car trips and then also you know, continuing to focus our development and have, you know, really good access to transit from 85% of our jobs and, you know, more than half of our housing. So one of the, the big strategies here that will be led by the transportation department is the mobility implementation plan. To really look to kind of knit together a lot of our different transportation plans and policies and programs. Also looking at how we can really support or, you know, continue to support that transition to electric vehicles. When we started some of this environmental stewardship work 10 or more years ago, it was really cities leading the way in providing EV charging infrastructure. Now there's a lot of different private companies doing this. So really looking at how we can support a lot of the efforts that are out there through PSE, through Electrify America, et cetera, to, you know, try to get some of these EV charging stations in Bellevue. And then, you know, I think we've obviously seen a lot of changes to commuting patterns due to COVID and, you know, there's, we, we don't know exactly what the post-COVID world is going to look like in terms of transportation. So, you know, continuing our transportation, transportation demand management programs, of course, and then also really understanding and continuing to monitor commuting patterns as we, you know, emerge out of the pandemic. As I mentioned, you know, we are committed to leading by example through our city operations. We're recommending a number of goals and targets that essentially echo the goals on the community side. But we're looking to do these 10 years faster. We've already made some pretty significant strides towards the renewable energy goal by signing up for PSE's Green Direct Program. Installing solar on two city facilities at the Crossroads Community Center and Bellevue Service Center. And so the, you know, the plan goes into much more detail, but you know, some of the, the key highlights here on our city operations side are really looking at how we can continue to squeeze some more energy efficiency out of our city facilities. And then also, you know, really continuing to work on electrifying our city fleet. You know, focusing more on our light duty vehicles initially. And then also really looking at how we can continue to institutionalize environmental stewardship in our operations, which, you know, we, we've already been doing quite a bit of work to that end, but just kind of continuing that and identifying more training opportunities and that sort of thing as they come up. We have heard an interest from residents in reporting on our progress annually and, you know, we have had an environmental stewardship dashboard for a number of years. We've just recently refreshed that. And, you know, have had it, we've given it a bit of a makeover, so it's just a little bit more user friendly, but also you know, have made sure the, the data and all the metrics in here match with what's in the plan. And so this will really be our vehicle going forward for reporting on progress in addition to, you know, reports to council and engagement with the community. But yeah, we, we are really interested in tracking and monitoring data. Recognizing though, you know, this year is definitely going to be an anomaly. Next year might also be a bit of an anomaly. So I, I think you know, we certainly are interested in the data, but it will be a little difficult in some ways to kind of compare things to 2019 as we go forward. So it'll, it'll be interesting to monitor that. So, you know, that, that really concludes the, the presentation. Obviously that was kind of a quick overview, but wanted to try to talk through some of the highlights in the plan in terms of the actions for the various focus areas. And, you know, at this point, wanting to reiterate our request for direction regarding the adoption of the plan at, at a future meeting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm going to call on everybody in this order, starting with council members on, then council member Barksdale, deputy mayor Noonhouse, council member Robertson, council member Stokes, council member Lee, and then myself. So we'll start with council members on.
Yes, thank you. I am so excited about this. Because to me, you know, so many people are ready to move forward in the sustainability work. And I think that we are poised to move this forward with urgency. So, you know, as a civil and environmental engineer that has worked in buildings and transportation, 92% of our greenhouse gas comes from those two areas. So I think that we are poised to move this forward. And I really do believe that government leads the way. We both own assets that can be more sustainable as well as are part of helping the community and all the stakeholders get us moving in the right direction. So, you know, when I think about where we're going, I appreciate the fact that we have been looking at bold with those leading edge actions. But I will say that what I saw was 70% of our community is pushing for leading edge. And I do think that although I agree that we have a 2050 goal, the 2030 is really the key goal that we need to be focused on. So I'd like to, for us to, you know, figure out how to have more specific timelines. So that we are able to look at phases by year. And I'd also like to look at, just like the economic development plan, coming back quarterly, so that that reporting is really visible, transparent. We'll hold ourselves accountable for taking actions. And making sure that the plan is really dynamic, so that we're able to take advantage of those things that other cities are already doing. You know, my sense is that we don't need to reinvent the wheel, because a lot of those strategies and actions are already available. And in fact, I want to give a particular shout out to the people for climate action. And the portfolio of actions that they've emailed to us, which a number of them are in our plan already, which is amazing. And I'd like to request how we actually pull more of those actions directly into the plan that we have, so that we can get going. And especially in the existing buildings area where we don't have the, that state's clean building for new buildings. So how do we really get at the existing buildings? How do we make sure we're moving forward with Vision Zero so that we can hopefully get people out of their cars and, and into those other modes? And when I think about our own buildings, how do we make sure that if we're going to build an OMF, cross-cultural center, aquatic center, that we're actually leading the way with our own facilities, looking at a carbon neutral? And then I guess my, my last point, and then I know we will go around and might go around again, is when I think about the work that we've already done, I'm wondering if by having these quarterly check-ins and continuing to work with groups like the PCA, that that's the way to move this forward? And while I appreciate the idea of having a citizen advisory, I think that this work is so dynamic and there's so many people that we want to engage with, that I, I would just, I think we just need to be really considering very carefully whether we want to create another commission versus finding a way to pull in some of these actions that they sent us in their strategy workbook. So I'll wait till the next round for more. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say thank you, Jennifer, for all the work that you put in and, and factor in the community's input as well. I do think also similar to what was mentioned by council members on, having the quarterly updates would be important. As a, as a KPI person. A couple of questions. So in the comp plan, we, we have sort of the overall and then we have neighborhood plans, neighborhood area plans. Have we thought about sort of monitoring by neighborhood and tailoring some of the actions by neighborhoods? So then, you know, I like the way that it's factored in ways that the community can get engaged. And I'm just wondering if there's a way for different neighborhoods to say, hey, look, this is something, these are actions that I can take. And then, you know, given their current situation and the, the different neighborhood can take a different set of actions and so forth. And then my last question is, how are we integrating it with other programs? So for example, when we do the virtual, when we do the neighborhood walks pre-COVID or virtual neighborhood walks afterward, how are we bringing in our environmental sustainability plan and actions to help educate and inspire people to participate?
Jennifer, I can go ahead and answer this one on the, on the neighborhood area planning. So our, our data walks are actually starting tomorrow night. We have one on Tuesday night and one on Thursday night and a number of the, the action and goal elements that Jennifer described are actually in our data that we're talking with the community about. So we do see a, a key interface between the neighborhood area planning and this environmental stewardship work. As far as some of the, the metrics, I think we would want to look a bit deeper to see if we can gather that information at the neighborhood level and talk to them at, about it. We do have things like the tree canopy by neighborhood. So that is one example that we do have the information, we can have a good discussion as well as the, the park and open space access. So I think we can look at the full breadth of metrics that Jennifer has in, in her report and look and see how they fit into the great neighborhoods work that we're doing also.
Okay. All right. Did you get all your questions answered, council member?
I believe so. So it sounds like the integration with the neighborhood area plan and the virtual, like, there was a broader sort of question around the neighborhood, just integration with other programs, like when we do neighborhood walk. So there's the breakdown, which you addressed, but then sort of generally speaking, integration with other programs.
The other neighborhood programs?
Yeah, I think the integration with the other neighborhood programs, that, that can be something that we use our current outreach that we're doing right now through Great Neighborhoods and NEP and other projects that are at that neighborhood level. I think as we get to kind of meet and know more people out in the community with these new efforts, we can try and pull the pieces together of all the programs that are out there and see where we can get some, some synergies moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Mac, Emile and Jennifer, for your presentation. And you know, you guys should be congratulating this incredible plan in, in a lot of ways, you know, it's thorough, it's specific, it's widespread in terms of its impact. So very excited in terms of where this is at. So thank you so much for the, to the work to date. And really appreciate the robust outreach, both within the walls of City Hall, but as well as outside. Really important. And love that the city is leading by example. You know, the, the, just so much to point to there and appreciate that update, Jennifer, within the, within the presentation tonight. So a couple of questions here. The performance dashboard, right now, how often would that be updated, Jennifer? Would that coincide, for example, with, if, would we be able to do that on a quarterly basis, as was suggested earlier? Or would that be done on a, you know, every six months, 12 months basis? What's, what's your current thinking on that, on the performance dashboard? Because someone who loves to have those metrics and those KPIs, that'd be really important to have. So I'm wondering what the frequency would be.
Yeah, typically we update those metrics on an annual basis and, and on a McMahon and I work, work together on that. A lot of the data is not really available more frequently than annually. So, and, and actually, there's a lot of cities that don't necessarily report on this data annually. They don't actually do their greenhouse gas emissions inventory annually. I think even Seattle doesn't do theirs annually. So I, it would be nice to do it more frequently than that, but I think annually is, you know, I would definitely say is more on the, you know, real best practice end of the spectrum. Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you. So I don't know how much of this was in the discussion or the outreach, but the plan doesn't seem to have any, any, I wouldn't say focus per se, but was there a discussion about public-private partnerships, taking advantage of all the incredible technology companies that we have here in Bellevue? The Amazons, the Microsoft, T-Mobile, et cetera, that I would think would want to be partners with us on something like this. So was that outreach or discussion have with some of our major employers in Bellevue? And if so, what was their interest level?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we, you know, there was certain, certainly interest in, from a lot of our large employers in, in supporting this work. You know, one of the areas where I think we need to explore what that could look like more is, you know, this idea of like a sustainable district or eco-district. I think that's, you know, in general an example of a public-private partnership, but those are often, you know, the city might help facilitate, but that's really kind of driven more by the private sector. So I think something like that could be an opportunity. I, I think, you know, we've heard a lot of interest in, you know, helping us achieve our tree canopy goal. You know, so our employers wanting to get involved in that. So I think, yeah, there, there are probably some more opportunities we could explore there around the, the public-private partnership approach.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we put that into the plan, that we continue to explore that on an ongoing basis or when we see an opportunity to, to partner. I think that'd be a great opportunity to do that. And then just lastly, before I yield my time, you know, originally I thought that perhaps, you know, going down the, the commission route might make some sense, but I think for, for, for this specifically, I really think that, you know, a technical advisory group, you know, for all the reasons stated earlier in this conversation, this meeting, with the, you know, with the, the, the need to take advantage of the expertise that we might have in our, in our community already. expertise that we might have in our, in our community already. I think there, there, there might be some value in that, you know, be it, be it the folks from the People for Climate Action or other experts within the area, within our region. If we can take advantage of their expertise to help this move along, especially when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions, I think there's some real value in that. So I just wanted to suggest that, that's something that we potentially might want to, want to look at. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. So wow, this has been a long time coming. I'm really excited to see this. Us getting so close to the end of getting this adopted and then we can start implementation. And I know that the public's been clamoring for this for a long time. I think that implementation is going to be really important, three components of it, to making sure that we get community buy-in. And if you have buy-in, then you get community to adopt. One is going to be to educate people, and I know that's part of the plan. So people know what they can do, what impacts they have. And, you know, things that they, they can do that will make a difference. The next is going to be incentivizing that. If we help our businesses, for example, the single-use plastics. During my briefing with staff, I talked about how Taco Time had converted all the way to completely compostable. So looking at how they did that, and if we need to, if it costs more. I mean, it's going to come down in price to convert as more people do it. But figuring out maybe we could give a, you know, B and O tax incentive for ones that, you know, for companies that do takeout that can convert that way. I think that's going to be really important to get people to adopt it. Make it so that it doesn't cost them money and they can feel good about it. And the third is going to be providing technical support and advice to different groups and businesses to help them implement a lot of these things. I love the idea of a eco-district. And I had the thought that we could get some of our neighborhoods if they had, and Councilmember Berksdale talks about neighborhood area. Getting neighborhoods to maybe replace some of their landscaping with rain gardens. It could be an idea that they could use the N E P funds for. We could have competitions on how green can you make your neighborhood? Planting trees, things like that. I think that that would all be really great positive work that will move the ball and make our whole community get excited about this. So finally, I, I, I also support a tag. I think Deputy Mayor had a good idea with that. And I think that should be something that we bring into being when we're ready to update the E S I next time. So not right away, but, or if we see a need in the interim with the quarterly updates, which by the way, I also support. I think Councilmember Zahn suggested those. I think things that we measure are things that we value. And we've started doing quarterly updates on affordable housing. We've started doing them on economic development. I think that having one for the E S I would also be a really good idea. But having a technical advisory group that comes together when we really need, need additional drilling down work beyond just what the staff is doing, I think would be great. I mean, you look at all the work the technical advisory group did on our affordable housing strategy. We can have some, Bellevue is filled with intelligent, engaged and knowledgeable experts who would love to give their time to help the city be even better. So I, I really strongly support that as well. All overall, great work from the staff, great work from the public engaging with us. And great work from the council. We've had a lot of meetings on this. And there's been some great conversations and I'm ready to move it forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is kind of weird this way. Yeah, I echo those comments and I agree, a technical advisory committee or group would be the way to go. And I, I think we should look at that fairly quickly. Because I think there are things we need to move along a little quicker than we're doing, and this would be a help on that. One of the things, and I echo a lot of these comments, I think it's a great plan. We have all this stuff in place and it's good. It's, it's very, what we're seeing tonight is very slim on actual information about the implementation, what's happening, all that. It's just, it's, you know, it's a broad plan and that's good. What concerns me is that you look at this and if somebody reads this and they say, we want to get to forty percent tree canopy in 2050. That's thirty years from now. I guess the way to, I'd like to see us being a little more aggressive on this. We're talking about even, even with 2040 still twenty years away. Things have changed in fifteen years in Bellevue. Things have changed in the climate and changed in a lot of ways in a short time period. And I think it, it, it creates a sense of, well, okay, maybe by 2050, we'll get to forty percent tree canopy. And it, it kind of takes away, I think, the urgency of, of the, of the, of the whole work that our goal we're going for. And I know it takes a lot of time, but when you start looking at those individual, a lot of the achievements we're looking for. They're not real big in some ways, particularly over that time period. I, I think things will overwhelm us if we're not really doing, being more aggressive on this. Because there are places and things are happening that are going to change things and we need to be more prepared for that. I'm not sure what that means, but I'm just, I guess I'm a little frustrated that we have a, it sounds like a really good plan. But it's such a time period and, and it's hard to get people motivated. If you say, well, we've got some time to work on this. That, that's my concern. I mean, I, I think there's a lot of great stuff in it, but we can't just say, hey, this is great, let's do it. What I'm concerned about is actually delivering on what we're promising. And if we're going to do that, we have to have more interim goals. We have to have a plan and look at what are we actually going to achieve? And, and how can we do that? How can we be aggressive? And I think that's what people in the community are looking at this and saying, it's a good plan, but is it really going to, are we still going to be planning and working on this when something really catastrophic happens? Because we didn't have action. So I, I would just like a better, a look at being more aggressive on this and building it into all the things we do in, in the city, not just having this segregated off to the side. And I think we're doing a lot of that, but I'm just encouraging us to do even more integrated into this. I do have, well, and I, as I said, I, I think the tag thing is, or something like that is good, good to work on it in the future. But I, I'm very encouraged by, by the whole direction, by the way it's been set up and everything. I'm just concerned that we're, it's a kind of a planning to do something sometime and we need to have more direct. I want to know, what are we going to do in the next five years? What are we going to do in ten years? What, what significant things can we do in this time period? Because if we don't make those moves, we'll never get to do it in fifty years. So that's, that's my, and I don't want to sound real negative on it, but I, this is, this is an urgency and we're, we're seen to be approaching it from the kind of academic context. And I think we, we have the skills, we have the people, we have the resources. We know there's so much information out there. We can be really cutting-edge, be much more aggressive on this and actually achieve something. And I'm concerned that we're going to end up in twenty years from now and saying, whoops, we're not there yet.
Okay. My concern. Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Yes, staff has done a great job in coming up with this plan and so took us to the point that we are discussing this. However, I have mixed feelings when I, you know, think about this, look at this and listen to our discussion. You know, I'm glad, you know, that we have a wonderful vision, wonderful plan. And, but same time, you know, I, I can't even say I'm elated that, you know, we're spending the time looking at this and having a, a, a plan to tackle this. You know, we've heard a lot of input from the public, I mean, over the last number of years. And it's more and more young people, women including, are coming up and they realize the importance of environment. Because we're getting more and more people, we're getting more and more economic progress. We're getting more and more things that, you know, is going to destroy the earth if we do not pay attention, do not take care of our environment. So we come up with these, these ideas and plans. So I, I feel that there are two things we need to do. One is people are asking for leading-edge solutions. Absolutely. You know, we are in a technology peak place. We're in the tech, technology period, technology revolution. But, you know, it's something that we have no control over. It's something way out in the distance. It's, it's difficult to plan. You know, we're looking at twenty forty, twenty fifty. And so, you know, I agree with the Councilmember Zahn. We need to look at near-term goals, twenty thirty goals. Things that we can do, things that we have control over. Things that we can lead by example, what the city can do. At the same time, working toward the leading-edge solutions, no question about it. But in the meantime, we've got to let people know what we're doing, making progress. And people build confidence that we, we mean it, we're serious about it. So I think the things that Councilmembers are mentioning, what the city can do without green building, without constructions, without the thing, with the things we do, with things under our control, like getting to electric vehicles, changing our fleet, you know, doing all the things. And we, we talk about utility department, you know, watershed management. Well, we, we control water, we control a lot of the things that, you know, it's environmental. As a result, we have, we have Environmental Services Commission. It, it should be more than just looking at setting rates. No, it's something that we should be looking at. How do we address environmental issues? Specifically, what the utility department has the most to do with it. Because they control waste reduction, garbage collection, water usage and wastewater treatment. All these things are under our, our control. So don't need to go look forward and say, gee, let's find somebody else who can do this. I agree. Partnership, private, private, private is important. Especially when we talk about technology, leading-edge solutions, we got to work with them. But that's not a, but we need to know where we can make, make account, show the people, the public who's asking us to do something. We haven't got anything to show. So I, I really support that. We need to do the things that we can, lead by examples. Starting with our departments, the things that we can, under our control. The things we can talk to our citizens about. We've got a great public, the public's willing to support it. If we talk to them, give them the opportunity to say, you know, we can do this and what you suggest. And then you come up with solutions. So I think we do this. If we don't just keep talking, planning, getting commissions together, reacting, what plan do we have? Let's do more. You know, we're looking five miles in the distance, thirty, fifty years away. But we have things right in front of our nose that we can do.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. Thanks. Okay, so we're running short on time here. I'm going to try to say what I was going to say for myself and then I'm going to sum up a little bit and then give people a chance to talk again. There's so much I want to say about this. This is one of my favorite topics. I will say that in the next time we do one of these, you know, the, you come right out and you talk about reducing greenhouse gas emissions by a certain time. And you tell us how you were going to do it. But those aren't really how you need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, those, you could not do any of those things and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Or you could do all those things and not reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I'd like to have a little more actionable statements on how exactly we plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions next time. And that's, I think on page ten, just that little intro there. I think the thing that I hear most consistently from the public is the tree canopy. And you do address it, you talk about our goals. And we talk about, you know, looking at our, our tree preservation codes. I get probably more emails about that than any other thing to do with tree canopy. So I hope that we can start work on that sooner than later. And see what we could do with that in addition to planting more trees. I think they have to go hand in hand. If you, if you lose a bunch of trees every time you plant a bunch of trees, you're not going to really gain much. Let's see. So I think, oh, oh, the, the other thing that I would like to add in there is, I think, probably the, well, my goal right now, I think only ten percent of the people who work downtown live down, live in Bellevue. And my goal is to increase that number to fifty percent. That at least fifty percent of the people who work in Bellevue live in Bellevue. Because you, you just imagine all the commute time and, and greenhouse gas emissions with travel that you're going to get rid of with that. And I love the concept of the fifteen-minute city. So embracing that concept, I'd like to see that represented in this document a little bit next time. But what I'm hearing from my colleagues is they'd like to see more frequent updates. And I don't know, you seem to think, Jennifer, I think that maybe two times a year would be the most you could do, but if you, but I hear a desire for quarterly updates. So anyway, I, I think we'd like to hear more about our progress. I like the idea of integrating the E I S program with our neighborhood programs. And teaching things like Councilmember Robertson said with the rain gardens and, and other things like that. And I, I think that that and fostering public-private partnerships are two things I would add into this document today. And the private-public partnership examples could be the establishment of eco-districts, working on tree canopy and even green development with our zero emission. What are those? Our green building development. So I think the R E I, now Facebook building is a great example of a pretty green building that was very popular for the next buyer because of that. I like the idea of creating a tag and I would like to myself, I would like to start working on that right away. And it sounds like there's support from the entire council for that. So maybe we can integrate the idea of that into this document and what the role of a tag would be. And then I totally agree with speeding up these goals and creating short-term goals. We call them enabling goals in my field. How, how do we get to those goals? And how do we measure our progress along the way? So that might be for the next document, next time we do this, and maybe with the help of a new tag. But this is great. This is really a good start. And it's, you know, once you get past what I considered kind of a weak statement on page ten, it is such a robust document. And I'm really pleased with the commitment to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, doing the things we need to be doing and, and, and kind of the promise for, for being better as a city and as a community. So thank you so much for this. I'm going to go around the table again and, and give everybody a chance to comment. I know Councilmember Zahn wanted to and anybody else can raise their hand and I'll call on the, call on them. So I see Deputy Mayor, I see Conrad, I see Councilmember Stokes. So we'll go Councilmember Zahn, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Stokes. Go ahead, Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, great. You know, I'm so excited about all of us being all into this. And I think that where I'd like us to eventually get to is where we have this culture of sustainability and it grounds us in all the decisions that we make throughout the city. So it's not just any one specific department, we're all in this together. And the urgency, I appreciate that because I think that when we look at our plan, let's figure out what we're trying to accomplish in year one, in year two, instead of a, here's what we're going to try to get to by twenty thirty. And, and I think we also need to be really careful about the equity piece of making sure that if we're talking about the ability to do weatherproofing or whatnot, that, that there's access and equity to the kind of things that we can do. I love the idea of the B and O tax incentive. I'm wondering if for residential, that there's things we can do with some kind of a low or no interest loaned for people to be able to do some of the, the energy type of improvements that they can make. You know, I guess the, the other one is just how do we really make this fun so that it is about each of our actions? And actually, I did have one more. The, the P C A, you know, when I look in there, they've probably got two hundred actions in there. And my question is, instead of reinventing the wheel or, you know, waiting for a tag to be able to identify ideas, it sure seems to me they've done the research. um, identify ideas, it sure seems to me they've done the research and the deep work already and provided this really amazing document. Can't we do more with incorporating some of those concepts? And as we then move forward, we can figure out which one of those fits into year one, two, or three, or, or broader, and who are some partners to do this work? Because what we haven't talked about tonight is the fact that we're part of K four C. And as you mentioned, several other cities on the east side are in the middle of working on their own E S P. So I think that we should look at how we actually leverage that broader coalition and alliance, just because, you know, if we've got someone living in Bellevue, they could literally be right across the street from Kirkland and Redmond. So it sure seems to me there's an opportunity there that we need, we also want to leverage about working with our other cities as well as the county. So those are my two questions.
Yeah, can you kind of decide, discern between what you would like changed in this current document? I mean, we don't want to send them back to, to ground zero with this, but knowing that they're going to come back um, in a year or so and redo all of this, what we'd like to see in the future versus what we want to change in this document tonight?
Yeah, so I guess my question to Jennifer would be, is there a way to um, reference the P C A document with some of the ideas there so that we don't have to sift through which ones didn't make it in yet? Um, so that it, that, that, um, that connection is not lost? Because that's amazing work that they've done. So my question is how staff might recommend we do that?
Um, yeah, we, we have gone through a process to kind of do a sort of crosswalk of, you know, what's in the plan versus what's in their spreadsheet. And there definitely is quite a bit of overlap. Um, you know, and we, we went through a pretty similar exercise to that, working with our consultant team. Um, you know, to really kind of look at best practice actions and the, you know, costs and benefits and, and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, I would say we went through something similar. We've, you know, been kind of reviewing drafts of their workbook. They've been sending it to us along the way, um, maybe since the beginning or so of this year as they've been putting it together. Um, yeah, we could think of it makes sense to, to reference it in the plan. Or, you know, I think we're, we're certainly aware of it and, um, you know, think it's a good resource. We, you know, there's, there's quite a few other toolkits out there that, you know, we've also looked at and, and other resources in addition to that one. Um, so, yeah, we, and we actually kind of, in our sort of internal SharePoint site, we have that all organized together with, with all those different resources and, and that sort of thing, but.
So perhaps somewhere in, within this document, we could have um, just maybe reference materials and, and include some of those pieces in, that would be fine. And then my other one was related to, as we think about tags or other um, ideas of how we collaborate and build that alliance and coalition. Um, having a note in there about how we might collaborate more with K four C or other east side cities that are already doing their E S P as well. So those are my two, um, requests.
I think councilmembers on, I think taking the reference approach is the right tact at this point. We have spent quite a bit of time looking through all of those other actions. And what you have before you is the staff recommended plan based on, on all of our analysis of other things out there.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be asking too much to include those references somehow in this document, or is that something we should plan, hope for, for the next one?
I, I think, I think as maybe as part of the, the, I, public engagement section, we can talk about other things that did come up during the, during the process and, and reference to those documents. I wouldn't necessarily want to, um, you know, try and have this, this is already a hundred and fifty page document. If we were, I, I would recommend not expanding it beyond what it is right now.
I'm fine if it, if you, um, include a note by reference so that we could go look if we wanted to, thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jennifer, it'd be great if you could do, um, just a little bit of research on the reporting structure, just getting back to that issue for a second here. It sounds like, uh, there's some, um, interest in quarterly reports. I, I think I heard you say earlier that annual reports are kind of best practice. I don't know if there's a way that, because certainly, you know, the data is important. But if we're only getting a partial picture, if it's quarterly, um, then perhaps we can't take the action that we need to take. But if we can get great data quarterly, fantastic, I absolutely think we should do it. And I think everybody, um, on the council would, would support that. But I just want to ensure that we're getting good data regardless. Um, or else we're not going to be able to make the right decisions to keep moving the ball forward. Um, as clearly you've heard tonight, this is an important issue to everybody on this council. Sorry, go ahead, Jennifer, you want to say something?
I think you meant me, but did you mean me or councilmember Robertson?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, uh, Jennifer, not the mayor, sorry. Unless, Mary, you want to say something, then please.
No, I thought I saw Jennifer Robertson raise her hand and I thought you were talking to her.
No, 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 I was talking to Jennifer, allowing her to answer that question. Jennifer, you.
All right, all right. Yeah, I just wanted, because I think I may have, um, caused a little confusion there. So, um, we, you know, from a data standpoint, uh, you know, we can look and see if there's some data that could be updated more frequently than once a year. But I think with the, the council check-ins, whether they're, you know, twice a year, quarterly, or whatever, I, I think those would be, you know, the data would be part of it. But I think there's also just a, um, a fair amount of progress to report on, just more in terms of the actions in the plan. So I, I think the, the data, um, and the metrics are certainly a component. But there's also a lot there, um, for, on both the community and city operations side. So even if, uh, we may not have new data, you know, quarterly, I think there's, um, a lot of material. And I think in the past, you know, we've often been a little pressed for time. Um, you know, with trying to get through the, the update. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Yep.
You know, although we may not have fresh data every quarter, I think there's still, you know, other progress and information that, that could certainly be shared.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification.
I'm going to ask that we, uh, may have someone make a motion to extend the meeting by, um, five minutes.
So moved?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, are you done Deputy Mayor?
No, I'm not.
Go ahead.
More, thank you. Uh, Jennifer, also be great, um, again, you have to answer this right now, but it would be great when you come back to us on this. Um, because on the energy section, to me, it, it felt a little bit like, well, let me back up on the climate change piece. So, um, it'd be great if we can get some more action items associated with that or looking at different technologies that can lower emissions, um, like carbon capture, other things like that, um, or even waste energy, which was something that we've talked about here before. But any, anything else we can do to help businesses lower their environmental impact as well? I think that'd be something that would be, um, of interest to everyone here. Um, and then also on this, and then go into the energy section, I was going to talk about, um, there's, it seems to be really focused strongly on solar. I don't know if you looked at any other types of energy sources other than solar? Um, and if so, to what extent? Again, it's getting late tonight, you can come back to us on that. But certainly there are other sources to, to, to look at there. And then, um, would really, and this is something near and dear to councilmember Lee's, um, heart, and certainly he's mentioned a little bit here, but I'd love to have a stronger, uh, transportation technology piece uh, to this, uh, as, as well. Um, yes, we do talk a little bit about ACES here, um, self-driving and autonomous. But, um, the transportation technology is so important and it plays a critical piece of our overall, um, environment and health environment and emissions. So would love to see a stronger piece of that as well in this. So, but again, I don't want you going away tonight thinking that, um, this is not a great plan because it is. But again, clearly we're passionate, we have a lot to add and a lot of questions, but great work again, thank you.
Uh, again, when we're talking, let's try to differentiate between what we want to have changed on this plan versus what we want to have changed the next time around. Because, uh, we don't want to have them have to start everything over again. So maybe in an email, Jared, you could explain to Jennifer what your hopes are with that. Yeah, okay, councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have lots of, uh, great ideas and this is a great plan. I compliment Jennifer, you and again. And so we, you know, my concern is we need actions, we need actions. Uh, you know, action has to be things that we can do, you know? Uh, even asking the, uh, the, uh, Environmental Service, Jennifer, you and to do all the things we're asking her to do. You know, she, she, I don't, I don't, I don't see how she can get all accomplished. Just coming up with dealing with what we have suggested. So my, my thinking is that we, we identified a number of departments that are already directly connected with the ideas, with the plans that has been articulated. And the ones that we don't have, well, you know, we worry about it in the long run. But in the, in the short term, we have utilities department mentioned, we have transportation department, which appreciate Deputy Mayor stressed very emphatically. They are going to be helping to work to take actions, develop those ideas and plan into actions. They can do it. And same thing with green building, why not? We can do it, changing fleet, we can do it. Each department has its own. You know, if we, we, we give them the idea to do it, that's one, that's what we can do, actions. And it, it's there, the concept. Second, you know, I, I like the idea of having more community that can help us, absolutely. But again, it's just additional ideas and things we have to do extra. We already have a utility, uh, so, Environmental Services Commission. And I know that, I don't, I heard people say, well, that's not the main charge. But they are a group of people, individuals that are already there interested, willing. I like the community, uh, that can discuss environmental issues and they are very interested. And I think that's legitimate, it's already there, they can use, would use that based on that and incorporate technology, people like TAG, people like P C A, whatever. You know, they can be part of the community organization commission we already established, it's there. We don't have to invent the wheel, we don't have to create anything, it's there. So I believe that we, if we just make sure we do things practically, that can be done and make it happen, people will be much, much happier. They don't have to say, well, let's do another, let's do another this and that's another plan. No, we don't need to do that, let's show some progress. I like the idea, don't have to be twenty thirty, it's what can we do in one year? What can we do in two years? What can we do in five years? Let's show people, we actually can do something.
Okay, thank you. So we have councilmember Stokes and then councilmember Robertson. We've got, um, ten more minutes. So if you could limit your, your comments to three minutes each, I'd appreciate it. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I'll be real quick, I, I just reiterate what I said earlier. I, I think, uh, this is something I, I think we need to work more directly on this. Great plan and everything else, I want to move past the planning stage. I, I do have to say, I have a, uh, the idea of turning the, taking the Environmental Services Commission, which is misnamed and making it, giving it a challenge, a charge in this is a little several dicey for several reasons. One of which, you really don't want to have a utilities department. Uh, there's, there's some issues there in terms of their work and the environmental work and how it comes together. They're not an environmental agency, they had, they affect the environment, but you want, as in, you, I mean, it, it, I just don't think that's the best thing to do. In fact, it would, would cause some real concerns about the objectivity and all that. I just put that on the table. Uh, uh, and I think it puts him in an awkward position, really. So I don't know why we named it Environmental Services, because that's not basically what they do. But I, I, that, I understand the, the reason on that or thinking, but I, I just have a concern. But I, what I'm really interested in is what we've been talking about is, I, we need to, we, we need to work on implementation, we need to work on how does this fit in with our policy? What do we want? And we need to have more engagement. And if we need more staffing, let's work on getting more staffing. Because to me, I, I, this is probably the fourth or fifth time we've had kind of the same conversation. I'm not sure how far we're down, where the road we're going. And we're not really, I know this is a plan, but the plan has to be built on and, and we can't, it has credence if you can say, well, we had plans before and this is what we've accomplished and now this is where we're going to go forward. This is a plan that isn't really, it's going forward, but it's just hard to look at it and say, so how is this going to actually accomplish anything? And I'd like to see more detail and, and, and less understanding and coming back and saying, we're doing X, Y, and Z. And this is how we're going to reduce this. And come back to us and ask us for action, ask us for something that's more aggressive on the tree canopy. Again, fifty years, you know, fifty years, we'll have forty percent reduction, that's, that's our goal right now. And I'm just, I'm concerned about where we're focused more on the plan and we are not putting the effort in and we need to support staff on actually implementing the plan. Thank you.
Okay. Um, councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, I agree, I'm ready to go, uh, let's adopt this. And, um, there's been a lot of comments tonight that have been very valuable, but I hope that there are comments that are meant to help give staff input on the implementation of this plan. And they're not comments saying, let's change the plan and go back and rework it. Because we've been on this a long time. Um, I, I think that we need to adopt it so we can get to the implementation phase. Um, I think the quarterly meetings or quarterly updates, which we've all, um, support, I think are really great because then we can give input on prioritizing or how we're going to implement. And I hope that, that staff will bookmark, um, a lot of the comments that councils made for implementation, as well as comments from the public for the same purpose. Um, I also, it seems like we have a lot of support for TAG. I agree that the Environmental Services Commission, they're busy doing our utility work, uh, capital budget, et cetera. Um, but I think a tag either towards when council gives more input on implementation to maybe vet some of that or towards the next update, or maybe both, I think would be really appropriate. Um, but I'm ready to, you know, finish council comments tonight, give direction to staff to bring this back for passage and, um, try to get out, uh, at ten oh five. So with that, thank you, everyone.
So, um, just a minute, councilmember Lee. So I'm not really hearing everybody say what you just said, councilmember Robertson. I'm hearing some people want to have it come back and look at it again with a few changes. And I'm hearing you say that you like it just as it is and you'd like to see changes made as we begin implementation of this plan.
Yeah, no, I wanted to say that I, that's what I, I hear everyone saying they support, a majority say they support a tag, majority want quarterly. My, my, my recommendation to my colleagues is, let's pass this. And then the interests that we have, they can, they're implementation items, really. Um, I don't think that we should be words, add to the end, I don't know what that sounds like.
Actually, I believe there were two substantive recommendations. Um, one was to work with the neighborhood programs and the other one was to foster public-private partnerships, which could be put into this document and brought back to us. But, um, it also could be put in the next time around.
Right, well, my, my recommendation is if we're going to have some changes, let's have them be in motion language, printed in the packet when this is ready to adopt. Um, because I don't think we need to keep nibbling at the plan, let's get the plan passed to implement it, that was my point. It, it, it wasn't that I didn't hear anyone saying they wanted changes, I was just saying, I think that those can be implementation. But if we're going to make changes, let's make them and pass it at the next meeting, thank you.
So, um, uh, coun- councilmember Lee, what would you like to say?
Thank you, if tag's not on the table, then I don't need to go into it. But if it is, I like to respond to people commenting on the Environmental Services Commission as appropriate.
That's really not on the table right now, so we're just looking at.
Tag is not, tag is not.
It's really not on the table because it's not in this plan, it's something that we can discuss later.
But you were talking about it, you say you might, you might make a motion to include that. But somebody have referenced the appropriateness of the Environmental Services Commission. I want to, referring to what Jennifer said, utility commission, they have time, they have capacity to do more. You know, that's what I'm trying to say, the commissioners themselves are very interested. And many of them have the interest, expertise, and commitment to looking to environmental stewardship.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you feel like you've received enough, enough direction that you could bring this back? Maybe with, with some changes? Or do you feel like you've gone so far on this that you don't want to make any changes? And, and definitely, I mean, um, city manager, Mr. Miyaki? And, I mean, City Manager, Mr. Miyaki?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually gonna look to Mac, who's unmuted now, to kind of sum up what we've heard in terms of what we're planning to bring back. I mean, there's a lot set this evening. We definitely heard some themes. I do agree with Councilmember Robertson. There's a lot of them we're on implementation. But I just wanted to look to you, Mac, and see if you could sum up in terms of what we're actually gonna bring back on the 14th. And, or if we actually have enough direction to bring back something on the 14th.
So thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Yeah, I agree with your comments there. I think the lion's share of what I heard tonight, and I think we would concur, staff heard, is more in the implementation realm and thinking about, you know, what are the first actions that we try to work on in terms of the work itself? Mayor, I also agree with your comments. There were a few substantive things that were thrown out there about should there be a policy very specific about public-private, you know, opportunities or pursuing those, which is a similar policy that we put into the economic development strategy, for example. So if the council were to concur that the two items that you just brought up, Mayor, were the two things you'd like to see input in the plan, being specifically some policy around public-private venture opportunities and being nimble to take advantage of those when and if they come up. And the second one being making sure there's coordination between the ESI work and the neighborhood planning work or any other, you know, work within the planning initiatives that's appropriate. I think we could draft that policy language that would be satisfactory for the council and just bring it back and place it for adoption.
Okay, that's great. And I do, I do like Councilmember Zahn's idea about kind of incorporating this into every department in the city. It's kind of, it's the same with affordable housing. It affects economic development. It affects so many other things. So with that lens on it, I feel good with that direction that you just described there. And I'm wondering if I could get some head nods from everybody to see how you feel about it as well?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, well, that's great. We do not need to take a vote on that, because I think you'll bring it back to us and we can rebuild them. So thank you very much. I think we're just under the wire here. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.